My name's councillor George Nolshammond. Welcome today to the final meeting this council year for the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. Today, this meeting is open to the public and it's also being webcast now. We do have questions from members of the public who received the deadline, so we'll be covering those shortly. Please make sure we're not making noise, mobile phones all switched off. There is no fire test planned today, not being on Monday. So if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction time staff and follow the clearly signed exits. Can I just ask members of the committee to introduce themselves? I'll start on my left and move round in a kind of U shape, starting with Steve. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'm councillor Steve Ares, I'm deputy chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
I'm Anne Woolhouse, I'm the councillor for Beaton.
Good morning, I'm councillor Kevin Oxley from Mossborough Ward.
Morning councillor Ruth Milson, representing Cluxton, Mossborough Ward.
Councillor Abdi Samohamed, Firth Park Ward.
Councillor Martin, Firth City Ward.
Councillor Angela, I am the co-chair of this committee.
Thank you all. Hopefully everyone's got access to the missing genders. There's copies over there of the paper copies, or you can look on the website to find all the papers you need. We've got no apologies for absence from members today. And on substantive items, there's no items where we'll need to completely exclude members of the press or public. However, if members of the committee or officers wish to refer to the closed dependencies items nine and 10, we will then need to ask members of the public, non-relevant officers and close the webcast to leave the room and we can discuss those then. So please be very clear if you wish members or officers wish to refer to those parts, those closed dependencies on those items 10 and 11, that'd be really helpful. Thank you. Can I now ask, on any items of the agenda, do any members of the committee have any declarative interest they need to declare? Not seeing any indications of that. In which case, can we go to page 11 of the reports pack and look at the minutes of the previous meeting, please? Let's just go through the page, just signal if you want to raise page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven and page eight. Has anyone got anything they'd like to raise on any of that? Not seeing any hands, so can I take those as approved by the committee, please? Looks like we've got a cent for that. Thank you. Right, okay, we'll now move on to public questions and petitions. We have received some questions from, that we've received in time here. So can I ask either James or Keith to come to the microphone, which I think is on the desk there? I assume that one's working. And please do ask your questions. Thank you. Perfect.
Good morning, everyone. Disability Sheffield is seeing more and more people we work with turning down the care they require because they cannot afford the contributions. A financial assessment calculates what people can afford to pay. However, many of our clients find that the contributions are unaffordable. As a result, people are turning down the care package they need to live their lives. And this has increased over the last year. We are very concerned that the consideration for cost of living increases is woefully inadequate. Additionally, for those who keep their care package but fail to pay all of their contributions, the debt is pursued and we are aware that some are being taken to court.
There are already many cases of even non-disabled people who work full-time having to choose between eating and heating. These contributions must inevitably put those who can't work in an even more difficult position. There is far more detail to the experiences we have outlined here. Would welcome not only answers but also engagement from politicians to grasp the implications of existing policy. First specific question is, how do disabled people who require care but cannot afford their contributions get the support they need? And the second question is, how has the financial assessment for contributions changed in light of the cost of living crisis and recent inflation?
And the final question, will councillors and officers meet with us to take further input on the concerns and matters which might help alleviate some of the reasons for people turning down care? In particular, we would also like to note that there have been times where officers have engaged, but I think we're now at a point where it's really important that you as a committee are aware of some of these challenges and, you know, able to take a look, understand if you're satisfied that all that can be done is being done on this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much for your questions. What I'm going to say is, I'm going to respond and some of the officers will have to help with some of the detailed response, but I would say from the chair that if any other member wants to add anything to that response, they can do. I don't know if that's disorderly, but I'm very happy for that to happen. The first thing I want to say is that obviously I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the kind of things we have done and are happening in terms of trying to help solve this, but nothing takes away from the fact that you've raised really, really important issues and we absolutely must meet. And I think that officers are keen to meet, as, you know, as lead members meet, but I think we also, open that to any members of the committee, we'll definitely arrange a meeting, let's go through this and let's... And so nothing I'm going to say takes away from the fact we need to sit down and work out, you know, what are the effects happening to people of Disability Sheffield are engaging with and other people in the disabled community in Sheffield? What is happening to people and where is our policy not helping people in the best way? If that is happening, we need to look at that. So I just want to talk about, the first thing really is to say that you'll be very aware of this. But we've got the minimum income guarantee, that's a national scheme, that's set by the Department of Health and Social Care on an annual basis. But as I think you know, that for many years that wasn't uplifted. And so in 2021, we took a decision as the council, it was almost certainly when I was cabinet member actually, to increase that ourselves when the government didn't do that. That means that the amount of income people could keep before paying the contributions would increase. And we've committed to increase that whether or not that minimum income increases. So that is one thing we did. But I think from last year, the government then did uprate it nationally as well. But that was, as you referred to, was after a long time of not doing that. Then you've also got the disability-related expenditure and those are, those are the allowances that we can give to reflect those additional costs of being a disabled person in Sheffield or anywhere in the country. And I think we have, you know, the uplifts of those are difficult, they're not always easy to calculate, but for this year and every year, they are uprated with inflation. So some examples are that the disability-related expenditure for food has increased this year by 14.9%, for transport by 13.4% and heat is just over 70%. However, what I'm going to, you know, really take into consideration is when we meet, we need to look at where are the, you know, what are the actual real world implications of both of where we sit with the minimum income guarantee, but also with the level and the areas covered by those DREs. And also, I think the thing to say is that with, you've mentioned the financial reassessments. So in this year, we've put more money into the team we have to increase capacity for our reassessments. So we can ensure that all costs are properly accounted for. And also, and I think this is really important and I hope it works in practice where it should do, the benefit income is also optimized because it's not just about how much, you know, the contributions are, but people need to be receiving the full amount of money in benefits they're entitled to. And as part of that financial assessment process, we do consider the cost, you know, linked to disability and, you know, and that needs to be evaluated in the amount the person can afford to pay. The concerns we have brought to team this last year, I think a lot of them have been in relation to the rising energy costs, you know, which have risen so hugely. And because of those costs, rather than asking for historic bills, we've actually been asking people for, though, we've gotten those projections from energy providers about what the future bills are, because actually the historic bills, as we know, have been a terrible indicator of future bills. And we haven't factored that additional support through the Energy Bill Support Scheme from the government into our assessment. So I think it's at £66 people get every so, and that is not taken into account for our calculations, which is also hopefully a way of maximizing some of that support. And with our policy, some costs are not taken into account, for example debt. But we do, I think one of the things, something that we've tried to improve as committee is improving support to people seeking that benefits and debt advice. We're funding a staff member at the City's Advice Bureau to provide financial advice and support to people to maximize income and to get some help. And I think where debt to the councillor rises, because absolutely what we don't want people into a situation where they feel that they can't take that care because they can't afford, where that debt arises, we have to give consideration to an integral circumstances and that we pursue all the avenues to support that person to make that payment before, you know, or if necessary reduce that contribution before considering debt recovery action. And that should only be where someone can pay. You should only pay what you can. We wouldn't and shouldn't be chasing people for debt that they cannot afford. That is no good for the council and certainly no good for that individual. And I do think that, you know, where there's a risk of a person refusing care or disengaging from care because of the cost, you know, we've got to look at that as a safety concern and that, those processes reviewing that will include the chief social work officer and legal representations. I suppose the last thing I'll just say, and I've been on this a bit, is that we all, as a council, you know, take our response to the cost of living very seriously. You know, it sometimes feels rather helpless when there's costs going so much, but, you know, we've got a strategy group, corporate as a council chaired by the leader, and, you know, huge amount of things that, across all different parts of the council, around communicating the help available from the government and from council funds like House and Support Fund in terms of ensuring people know where to go to get support, whether that be warm places or support from their housing provider. And, you know, I'm really pleased how many voluntary sector organisations, including Disability Sheffield, have engaged in that work. And I think we recognise that disabled people are hugely affected by the cost of living crisis. But absolutely, we have to take a corporate approach and make sure that everyone, no matter whether you receive care or support from the council or not, feel like the councillor is supporting them through this crisis. I hope that helps answer some of the questions, but this is not the end. We absolutely need to meet and work through the concerns. Thank you very much. And also, if anyone else wants to say anything, please feel free.
Yeah, thanks for your questions. It's concerning that people are turning down care because they can't afford the cost of care. It's a very complex and lengthy response that George has given, but it is something that we're happy to, certainly, I believe, cross-party to work with Disability Sheffield. And I'm quite happy to meet, to discuss those, you know, to explore more fully the reasons why people are turning down care, if that's the case. Thank you Chair.
Do any other members, Angela?
And thank you, James and Keith, too, for bringing this here today. I agree with you, it's very important that we ask the public the questions in public so that other people are also aware. And we work really well cross-party in this committee. And I'm really grateful that you brought this here. We always talk in briefings about people. And I think it's really important that we see what happens really on the ground. So I'm very, very happy to, you know, to attend meetings and, you know, work with officers and with, you know, with Disability Sheffield on this issue and other issues. We always need to listen to what's happening on the ground. Thank you.
Thanks Angela. If any other members want to comment, I'm just going to turn to Alexis, who I think wants to comment.
See, we really welcomed the questions and thought it was really helpful, questions and very poignant, I think, given the current cost of living crisis. And certainly just to support members here, as we'll be in touch to coordinate a meeting with Disability Sheffield to look at this being taken forward as an issue in Sheffield. So, thank you.
Thanks Alexis. Unless anyone else has a question, we will be in touch. We'll liaise with officers and then yourselves in terms of making sure we can arrange them to go through it in the proper detail it deserves. So thank you very much for coming, both you today. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, our next item is item seven, which is our work programme. I think Fiona are going to take this, take us through this, is that right? Thank you.
That's right, yes. So as you can see, this is the last meeting of the 2022-23 Policy Committee year. And we're now going to be looking ahead to the next year, which will begin in June. The dates of those meetings for the coming year are not going to be approved until the Budget Council meeting. But as ever, there's an opportunity now for any members to raise any issues that they might want to see on future agendas. So yes, I'll open the floor to questions if there are any.
Thanks Fiona. Just before, any questions raised? As Chair and Deputy Chair, we have discussed that between now and the end of this council year, we need to have a meeting to really, it doesn't matter who's on the committee next year, to really start to set out what some of those priorities and items should be. Officers have been clear that this year has been a very, very, very busy year for the committee, we all know this. And that next year should still be really, really full of important items, but hopefully a little bit more space to bring forward items that are, you know, are some of those more longer-term development priorities because we've, you know, because we've done, you know, so efficiently with certainly the strategies and things we've done this year. Councillor Milson?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, thinking, reflecting on how this first year of committee system has worked out and thinking forward. I'd like to make a suggestion that whilst I think officers are probably squirreling away, even as we speak, working out the future meeting schedule. And if that's to be done a whole year in advance, might there be an opportunity to ask for space on a, to be booked in on a regular basis for workshop-style sessions for this committee to understand a bit more about forthcoming items? I know we've had some briefings pulled in, which has been really useful, but I think that informal space to understand some of the items that will be coming forward throughout the year and to give members a chance just to go a little bit deeper into some of those and avoid that sort of slightly rushed committee cycle where we see papers quite late on and we don't really get a chance to deep dive into them. Would that be an option to request that, say, six sessions are put through the year in which we have that really informal space to explore items?
I think personally, that sounds like a good idea. Obviously, we need to look at, you know, in the new committee, we'll need to look at how that works in practice in terms of both alongside the items and the resourcing for that. But I absolutely, I think, can see that taking the learning from this year around how we've done things, that's a very valuable idea. And I suggest that alongside looking at the potential agenda for next year with between now and May, that idea is explored. Angela?
Yes, thank you Chair. Thanks Ruth. So I think that is a really good idea. I think it would be good if, you know, the three spoke people for the three groups could meet before the election and have a look at a shape of what we think we want to include in the agenda and the work programme. And then maybe at key times, because there will be items that have to be discussed at certain times of the year. So we already know that it's got to be, that item has got to be in October, that, you know, the legal side of things that we need to do. And then before, you know, we bring things in on particular issues, we can have like a workshop or something with members mindful of the fact that some members have work and have caring responsibilities. Having the dates as long in advance as possible and not set for half terms or things like that really helps for diaries, you know, especially for people who have children or care for people. So the sooner we can do it, the better really. But thank you to officers for facilitating that.
Thanks Angela. Councillor Ares?
Yes, I'd support that suggestion. If there's one thing we've learnt over the past year is how busy the agenda of this policy committee has been. And I think that we've been, with having tackling issues early on and having an idea of planning early on, we've managed to avoid having urgency meetings, haven't we, urgency subcommittee meetings? And I think that, you know, that we need to continue to have those early discussions. So I support that suggestion Chair.
Thank you. So taking it all on board, what I think we're saying is that in the next couple of months before the end of this year, the Chairs and Deputy Chair will meet in order to try and set some outlines for next year and take into consideration, you know, that desire to have, you know, some more time for committee members to kind of have some work around things and work out how we can achieve that. So is everyone okay with the work programme, given all that?
Could I just ask, 2.2 where it says about the induction programme, is there going to be one? Because actually I found it quite difficult joining this committee. I feel as though I'm like paddling through and still am. I just wondered what the plans for that were. It's on page 21, it says, to receive training and development.
So just, I think it's a very good point. And certainly, I would say on going into the committee season last year, I think we recognised that adults is a very big agenda, busy agenda locally, nationally and whatnot. And it covers a significant area. So what we've done is started to draft up and develop an induction programme for members exactly on that point. And we really want to work with members to make sure that we're taking board the learning from this year, but also develop that induction programme so going into next year, members feel really well-prepared for the next committee season. And also, coming back to kind of Ruth's point about the workshops, we think that's, you know, really, really helpful, is a good way forward to involve and engage. So that's going to be one of the key things that we'll be in touch with members to kind of plan for next year and to really make sure that we reflect your views as to what would be helpful. I think the other bit for me is around the legal basis and the preparation for CQC coming in as well and to make sure members are really prepared for the scrutiny function of the committee in terms of CQC as well.
Thanks Alexis. Is that, oh Angela, do you want to...
Yes, sorry Chair. Yes, I thank you very much for that. I agree with you, it's been like a rollercoaster. And I think when we started, it was such, we were so busy, especially with the challenge of the budget, that we just, you know, particularly the three of us that were all briefing and I've had sometimes five, six hours of briefings a week. You know, it's been difficult, but I can understand that for members who are not the spokesperson for the group, it feels remote. We didn't have any kind of proper induction because nobody knew what the committee system was going to be. So this is reflecting on what this year's been, has been a learning curve. So we want to ensure that the new members or, you know, some of us, if we're still here next year, that we have, you know, some kind of learning before we are asked to make decisions on things because it's very important. This year, we just went for it because we, you know, the time was tight and it took a few weeks to get started with the new system. But we have been discussing this during the year in terms of what is needed going forward. So thank you for saying that.
Sorry, okay, that's fine Ruth.
Sorry, I should have said earlier as well, there isn't really time to discuss this today and that's kind of indicative of how much work this committee does deal with. But there is also the public engagement toolkit which applies to every committee under this new system. And I've just reread the list of toolkit items that are available to the committee. And it seems to me that a lot of this happens through the work that Alexis and her team do. And a lot of the public engagement happens through the consultative process and the continuous improvement process of what we actually deliver. And so this committee doesn't see that and doesn't necessarily need to see that or be part of it. So acknowledging that that does happen as part of the process. Is it worth this committee in its next year considering whether any of these public toolkit items should be utilised? Whether that is a public space that ought to be opened up? And I know it's a time capacity issue, but is there as part of the system that we're all part of now? So just flagging it up really, that it doesn't get overlooked?
That's helpful. Thank you. I think it's been a really helpful discussion actually. And there's a lot to reflect on, I think, when we have this discussion for the end of the year. And I think in some form, we need to feedback to the committee before the end of the year from that discussion around an outline of where we want to be for next year in many ways. So I think it's been a really helpful discussion. With all that being said, are we happy to approve the work programme as it is? Take it all as approval? That's great. I think that's agreed. Thank you. Next, we have item eight, which is the Adults' Care Prevention and Living and... There's prevention in that word somewhere. Early intervention and prevention update. And we've got Sandy from the ICB here. Hi Sandy.
Hi, thank you Chair. So hi, my name's Sandy Bocken and Director of Strategy for Sheffield Place of NHS South Yorkshire. This is a dual presentation paper, so I'm going to hand over to Alexis Chapel first in the first instance. Thank you.
So Sandy and I are doing a double act today. We, there's, I'm going to start by saying there's really good joint work in between health and social care colleagues in Sheffield, which I'm really proud of, both strategically and operationally. And this has really cascaded through this paper. And, you know, for me, as part of the future design of adult care, which was approved at committee in November, underpinning all that was that shift towards earlier intervention and prevention enablement. So ultimately, people can live healthy, long lives at home and to live the lives that they want to live and to have really good outcomes. And, you know, one of the key things for me, when we look at early intervention, it's not a thing, it's not a service. It's about how we very much, actually coming back to Ruth's point earlier on, how we engage with people, communities, to enable people to live that good life. And that's what's really core to all of this. And so essentially, we've taken an approach which goes across all of adult care. It's not about, well, one-touch approach, but everything that we do is about independence, about early intervention and prevention. And that, you'll be here, that's through, we're living in Age and Well paper up to date and also the Adult Feature Options and also our strategy update. But core to that is bringing us all together under a coherent integrated strategy with health colleagues around early intervention and prevention, which is what Sandy has agreed, and I'm really pleased about that to go lead upon on behalf of us in terms of adult care.
Thank you. So yeah, so as Alexis says, the paper talks about the proposed work for next year 2023-24 that brings together the integrated work across health and social care partners to look at the priorities of early intervention and prevention, which is detailed within the Adult Health and Social Care Strategy. So it is proposed... So it is proposed that the early intervention and prevention becomes part of the community development work that assist and partners we feel is an absolute priority within Sheffield. It is currently being established within the Sheffield Health and Care Partnership infrastructure. And it really does bring together partners and communities, voluntary sector, and really has our citizens' voice at the centre in not only the delivery, but the development of what our priorities should be within this space. So it really is quite an important time to really bring this into that integrated space. The strategy we're looking to be co-created with our communities, we're already starting to reach out to our communities and citizens to really be a part of this work. And as the paper details, there's already been a start of some of that integrated work already happening, but really demonstrates the importance of partnership, collaboration and co-design in that work and process. So it's not just about talking about how things are and getting that feedback and experience, but really embedding that approach at the start of how we want to progress with this strategy. So the paper then talks about the different recommendations, so it's really asking committee to look at agreeing this is the approach and way of working for this strategy, to endorse that, actually to incorporate adult early intervention and prevention within future policy development in this space. And proposing to bring the strategy back to committee in September, really ensuring and endorsing that community design and co-creation with our citizens' voice at the heart.
Thank you very much, both of you, for presenting this paper. Just got a question coming through. First, Angela.
Just very quickly, thank you very much for the report. So it's really good to see and it's really good to see that our kind of links with the Sheffield Place NHS is getting stronger and stronger. My question is about how will we ensure that we truly involve all communities and all and not just speak to the same people over and over again? And how do we ensure that we listen to the quiet voices out there that are not engaged? Because we're not very good at engaging people. And this is both at council level and NHS level, it's big organisations. Because it feels like we always have the same people in the room and I think we need to be better. So is there a plan to ensure that we go out and ask people rather than rely on people we already know bringing the same things to the table all the time?
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. We recognise that that is an issue. And we're working with voluntary organisations to help us reach out to people who have not necessarily been engaged before. We feel that this is a really important area. We've invested in some resource and capacity to do that, but also recognise that there's people active in this space across all partners. So actually bringing it together as a system, we can recognise where we've got gaps and actually do something to assist and partners to really reach out and make sure we are listening to all voices. We may still have gaps, you know, and it'd be good for people in the committee and others to actually challenge back as to whether or not we have gone out, have we done enough? Is there any other things that we can be a part of? But actually ensuring that the strategy is co-designed with citizens at the heart, we can hopefully recognise where we've got gaps and do something about it at that point. But at the moment, we are actively going out to communities and those that we haven't necessarily heard from before to ask them how they want to be best engaged with. So we are doing a lot of that legwork now.
Thank you. Abda Sam?
Thank you Chair. A hundred per cent agree with the comments that Angela made. Very often, communities are not engaged with. I think it's a brilliant idea that we're going to get community development workers. I think from experience, what I've seen is that sometimes with all sort of the well, the best intentions in the world, community development doesn't come natural to everybody. And actually, unless you're trained and supported in that particular field, you wouldn't have a clue about how to reach out and engage with people in communities. And very often what I've seen is people who are employed in community development roles remain in the office and don't understand that it's going out there and talking to as many different people as possible. What training are these individuals going to get? So there's a particular ICDH course, which is brilliant, which teaches grassroots community development work. And the previous sort of group of community development workers that the council had didn't get that training. And what we found from experience was those individuals would then go out into communities, reach to people who were doing genuine community development work and ask for help on how to reach for communities. I come from a background in community development work and it's a skill that's learnt, it's not something that comes natural to everybody. So I think training is essential and the ICDH course I would a hundred per cent recommend.
I would love to pick a conversation up at the meeting to be honest and talk to you a bit more about that. As I said, this is something that we're starting off from, so it's in its infancy. So with your insight and knowledge, I'd very much appreciate a conversation with you about it. We're exploring all options, is what I say at the moment. Even to the point where we've been discussing with the community groups what positions look like embedded within them, rather than within organisations to actually look at how we can explore providing funded roles within the communities themselves rather than within the NHS, for example. So I'd love to pick up a conversation with you outside to engage and inform some of the strategy work.
Thank you. Ruth?
Thank you Chair. Quick question about the Sheffield Directory, which is mentioned on page 35. Obviously it's still quite new, the new directory. Is there any early indications of how well that's being used and the kind of engagement that's coming through that? How is it being measured? How well it works and how useful it is to people? And then I've got a question about the strategies.
Can I hand over to Alexis for that one please? So it's a really good question about the Sheffield Directory. So Tim Collins, who's our Assistant Director for Access and Mental Health Wellbeing, is leading around the Sheffield Directory. And what we've actually done is brought a group around it to actually do a baseline and work with it. What we see is the feedback from partners and from individuals has been really positive about it so far. And what we're aiming to do is work with, hopefully, fingers crossed, work with a national organisation to build within that as opportunities for self-help and self-assessments, so that to make it even easier. So if I think about an individual, nine o'clock at night needs some help, how can we use that as a way to go and get practical assistance? And that will basically increase its usage even further. So we have got a group around this and what I could do is with committee is link you with Tim to give you more feedback and write that out with. But yeah, it's good development.
Thank you. Got any other questions?
Sorry, yeah, just because it's on a completely different part of this here. So could you say a little bit more about how, because this, the strategy that we're working on predates the integrated care system, I think, really doesn't it? And I just wondered how well it's sitting within the emerging strategy that's coming out of the ICS, so the strategy drawn up by the partnership and being worked on by the Integrated Care Board. Do you feel like this, like what we've got in Sheffield Place sits really well within that? Or is there some shifting to do? Do you feel like it's, you know, this strategy has got the right sort of level of esteem within the whole integrated care plan? Yeah, you see what I'm getting at?
I do, yes. So the Integrated Care Partnership Strategy will be going to the Health and Wellbeing Board. But the development of that strategy is an accumulation of all of the Health and Wellbeing strategies across the four places in South Yorkshire. So Alexis and others have been very much a part of the development of that strategy. So the Sheffield Adult Social Care Strategy, for example, would very much complement what's in there because there has been that discussion of alignment and work towards. This early intervention and prevention strategy would absolutely complement and align to the work that we're already developing in terms of the plans in order to deliver the strategies, objectives as part of the planning work that we're currently doing. So I would say that there is a nice alignment. I'm happy to come back to committee to show the alignment in future meeting if it needs be, if that's, because there seems to be a lot of strategies, a lot of work, a lot of pieces of work going on. And I'm happy to present that back if that would be an interesting aspect for that piece of work.
Thank you.
I'd be interested in that Chair, but if it's only me, then it's not that important.
No, that feels like something that clearly, I think, if we pass this today, we'll probably want to have a further update and it might present to ask to pick up within a further update to this paper. But we'll cover that in a second. I actually have a question myself actually, which is, I really welcome this. Clearly, some elements of this are relatively discreet to the Health and Social Care world. Things that we can do ourselves or working in an integrated way between adult social care and elements of the ICB work. But when we look at the side which is most embedded in our communities, not only do we need to work, you know, for community and with communities in the way that points are made today, but we also are going to be going to ground that perhaps other parts of the council or other organisations in the city will be working with. And I guess the question is, how can we get the balance right that we don't step onto the other toes of what's happening? But nor do we ignore the fact that this is part of a much wider picture and try and drive that part. How can we get that right level of coherence with other strategies which are seeking to support and develop, you know, community organisations, but also resilient and healthy communities in the city? Thank you.
So from my perspective, and I'll pass on to Alexis for her comments as well in a minute, but from my perspective, we are looking at scoping out what work is being done, where there is overlap, where we can work together. I think the important thing of this paper and bringing in assist and partners is we're looking at it from a system perspective. What can we do that requires all partners in the room, with communities, with our citizens, that everybody needs to be a part in pushing forward? It doesn't take the focus away from individual organisational work because it brings it together where there needs to be that more aligned, more collaborative work happening to really make the impact that's needed. And I think that's what's important, is not forgetting and recognising what's the brilliant work that's happening from each organisation in this space, but actually what can we do together better, bigger as a system? And that's where this paper is at for the strategy. But I'll hand over to Alexis.
Exactly. Well, one of the key things that I have legally going to actually is the DAS and actually is actually to go and have an adults early help strategy in place. And, you know, I was a great believer as a person that you think about approach and actually exactly what George said earlier on is that this is about approach and it's about, you could take it as a very straightforward, think about it as a silo, but that would do no good for the citizens of Sheffield. So what we really done is we worked together and take that citywide approach to saying actually, how can we work with partners right across the city? And actually, exactly what was talked about earlier, is we work with communities and work with individuals to make sure their views are absolutely core to what we do. And we do that as a partnership activity so that what we become is that added value of actually become far more joined up so that from the point of view of individuals, as individuals hear a single coherent narrative across Sheffield, which is what's really, really important. And when I think of all the people that I speak to and when people come to me with concerns, it's always about that things feel quite disjointed. So for me, this is about a really good headway into starting to bring things really more coherently together. And on a really practical kind of basis, the kind of mapping exercise across the city with colleagues in community services, across housing, across all the different aspects, that's what we're going to do. But also secondly alongside that is officers of the, and I was going to mention this actually as part of my DAS report, but what we've also done is committed to the located committees and making sure we're really good to join up links with the LACs. And one of the key things that we are doing is allocating an officer from adults to each located committee so that we're really linked into that. And I could see that on a very practical basis. It's actually, last week I was walking around Hillsborough last week as kind of a, and it was really good to kind of connect back into communities and talk to people about what's going on. And I think that that approach is what we want to have as part of this, you know. So I think that we've really taken, I think by taking this joined up approach, what we hope is and what we aim to achieve is just far more joined up focus on working with communities, but that more earlier intervention and prevention approach across Sheffield. And I think we've got a great commitment from partners around that, which is good. It's really nice.
Okay, Cooley Martin, thank you.
Thanks Chair. It's kind of following on from your question, might have been what you were driving at, but I just want to make sure that when we're referring to partners, who we're referring to. So I know in the report, thank you for the report, it's really good to see the joined up work going on here and all of it sounds great. Obviously, like, prevention is incredibly broad, as is acknowledged in the report. And I know at points it deliberately highlights that things like transport and housing has direct impacts on health, social inequality has impacts on health, but we can't look at absolutely everything within the scope of this report. So we've narrowed down a little bit on what we're looking at and that's completely understandable. What are we looking at outside this report and as a wider strategy for linking in with public health and transport and housing? I know you kind of were just talking about partnership work here. I just want to make it clear that when you're talking about partners, it is like voluntary sector, et cetera, but it's also transport, housing, et cetera. Thanks.
Just to confirm that, absolutely. What we're trying to do is take an approach that's really joined up. So if I look at it to a two bases, number one is on a very practical base, linking with colleagues in the voluntary sector, communities, housing, police colleagues as well, as well as providing rescue and also with transport. But also the located committees, because I think that's a really key link for us. But also recognising the links to the wider partnership pieces of work that are undertaken already, such as like the All-Age Autism Strategy, which we're developing, our Learnabilities Strategy, which we're developing, and equally our All-Age Mental Health Strategy. And each of these have a golden thread of prevention, early intervention. So there's a lot of connected work across the city and what we're trying to do is bring that together in a very joined up way so that we have a very single coherent narrative. So we can articulate that in a straightforward way from a point of view of people that we speak to, which I think is really important. At the moment, I think that there is quite a lot going on and that's what we're trying to do is to make it coherent basically with partners.
Thank you both, Sandy and Alexis, for presenting there. And thanks for having the questions. Just turning now to the recommendations we've got on page 32 of the report. Obviously, in terms of the updates committee on the final recommendation there, I'm taking into consideration what you made Ruth around those topics and I think that's important. And I think we had a good discussion here, so I'm sure that we, you know, the committee will be keen to hear how this is getting on, you know, in whatever sequence time is September, if there is a September committee indeed. So that's great. Can I ask, are we all agreed to those recommendations? That looks like we all agreed, no dissent. Okay, fantastic. That's approved. Thank you. Right, on to item nine now, and that's our Care Sector Workforce Development Strategy and Update. Got Janet Kerr to present today. Welcome Janet.
Yes, hello. I mean, you'll have looked at the documentation around this and it's incredibly comprehensive. And I think one of the things I want to start with is, although my name's at the top of this paper, I can't take the credit for this work. I've worked with a colleague called John Chamberlain, who has done really all the work around this and I think has done a really good job. I want to pick out a few things in particular. I mean, I hope one of the things you'll have picked up here is we're very much outward facing in terms of what we're talking around our workforce strategy. We're not talking about just what we do in the council. And we've got, one of the things that we've done is we've got a workforce board, which has been operating now for a number of months. And in terms of, you know, looking outwards and working with others and in the spirit of partnership, that workforce board is co-chaired by someone from the ICB and someone from Skills for Care. I'm currently in the process of looking at the structure that sits with me in order to take this work forward. Because we haven't really had people in place whose responsibility this work was. So at the moment, I'm just working on an achieving change. I've got a meeting with the unions next week actually to put in place two service managers. So at the moment, I'm just working on an achieving change. I've got a meeting with the unions next week actually to, to put in place two service managers. One of those service managers will be the outward looking face, the other will be the inward looking face. I think the other thing I want to say that, you know, you'll see it's very much about valuing staff. What we're talking about is, is valuing staff, recognising what, what staff bring to, to the organisation and particularly to the, the sort of work we do. And we all know there are challenges around recruitment everywhere and for us, that's a particular problem. So we're, we're doing a lot of work around recruitment. You'll see there was some nice photographs in the, in the report around the recruitment fair that was held in this building recently. You know, we've been doing various things around recruitment. I'm working with an agency because one of the problems we have at the moment is recruiting social workers. I've got some specific work going on around that. But the other side for me is we need to focus on retention of staff. So you'll see as well that we've, we've put a lot of focus on retention. Our recent restructure has looked at progression models for staff. We had progression for, for some of our staff, but not, not all of our staff. So we've now got a more comprehensive retention, progression route, which I think will aid retention. Because I think we were losing staff to local areas around us who, particularly at the beginning of social workers' careers, people were moving on to other places. But we very much feel that, that we've, if we value our staff, if we deal with them in, in the right way, if we provide them with the proper training and development, we'll keep people. So we'll less likely have to, you know, be recruiting all the time because that's, that's time consuming and expensive. So shall I stop there? Because I think Angela's got a question.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, thanks Janet. Angela, go ahead.
Thank you, Janet, and everybody else who's worked on this. I think you'll know my, my question because I asked this question in lots of meetings. In terms of staff, how do we support, you know, in view of the Race Equality Commission, how do we support staff from minoritised community and also staff that may have access needs? And how do we encourage them through the ranks of the organisations so that we see more people from those communities and present at the highest levels in the organisation? So is there anything that we are actively doing, differently doing so that we support those people to make it to the top?
I would say probably not as much as we should be doing, and I think that's something that we can really focus on going forward. It's, I mean, there's things about where, where you advertise that those are discussions I have with, with HR colleagues. The, what we're doing at the moment is we're actually looking at working with one of the big recruitment agencies who I think will have broader span of who they'll contact. And we can get in a position where, and it's about being on the front page of Google really, they'll, they'll get to the top, so more people will see that advert. But I, I think there is more active work we can do and physically get out there. Things like the recruitment fair, I think are really positive. And I think we can do those sort of things on a more local level. So we add something to the town hall and we add a lot of footfall, we add a lot of people through. But I think it would be, I mean, one of the things I guess we could do is look at linking up with the LAX, going actually out into areas and holding smaller events for people. It's, I, I think it is a really difficult thing and it's, and it's easy to say you're doing things that are a bit tick boxy and I don't want to do that. I'd want to do something properly. But I guess, you know, we work with the university, so we get, it's about encouraging people that have been at university wanting to come and work for us rather than other people. And it does tend to be more, you know, and, you know, I'm not quite sure what I'm trying to say here. But I, I think it's, it's something that we need to give some more thought to. I wouldn't ever want to say, no, we've, we've got this right because I don't think we have at all.
Angela, any other questions? Ruth and then Kevin.
Yeah, thanks for the report. Just thinking about valuing staff and, and the issue of pay. So there's a, there's a reference here to how staff are recognised, 1.5.7 in the report. It is, I wonder if you can just unpack a little bit where it says staff are recognised, valued and rewarded. What that actually means in practical terms and what, what the goals are. And what perhaps what staff say about how they want to be recognised, valued and rewarded, just quite interested in that. And then just to note that we, as a council, have signed up to the GMB Ethical Home Care Commissioning Charter. And that having signed up to that charter, I've got a couple of questions about two things that it says. The national rate of turnover was estimated at forty-seven percent. And I wonder how we compare to that in Sheffield, thinking about home care. And it recommends that we should be aiming for fifteen pounds an hour.
Yeah.
And is that a target in, in our strategy?
Yeah. In terms of the, the valuing staff, if I talk particularly around the progression and, because I, I think certainly the feedback we were getting from people, because particularly if you're a social worker, you might go off and do your three years train, you might pay for it yourself, you might do it through our apprenticeship scheme, which I think is a very useful way of valuing people. So we have longstanding staff who, who we then put through the apprenticeship scheme, come back as social workers. But how the system worked before was that those people, they basically, we, we paid the same money for someone who was doing that job unqualified, disqualified. So they might have gone away for three years, done a degree, paid the money you have to pay or got a loan to, to do that degree. They would come back, they would be on exactly the same salary they'd been, been on before they, they left. They would then do the first year as a social worker and they have to, social workers have to do something like, that's called the assessed first year in, in practice. And they put a portfolio together. It's, it's internally and externally validated. It's quite robust. At the end of that, they still were on the same salary and they had to wait three years. They'd get the normal yearly increments, but they'd be, for the next, they had to do three years before they could then put in a portfolio to go on to the, the next, where it was a couple of grades up. So what we've done is we're recognising that assessed first year in practice. So once people have done that, they automatically will go up to the, the next grade up. And, and really that was, that was the, the biggest amount of feedback we were getting from people, why, about why people were choosing to leave because neighbouring authorities had a different approach. So we chose in our restructure to do that. In terms of the, I'm, I'm probably not the best person to talk about the home care stuff. I don't know, Alexis will come in on this. Yeah.
So for the wider care sector, do I just kind of answer that question of the wider care sector? As part of our recommissioning, which committee approved over the last year, all the committee reports, three big ones was the home care recommissioning, the supportive living deck, the working age activities one, and also the residential in February. And it's, and built and part of these, each of these, these, these activities is to work with the care sector in a very different way. And Catherine's going to speak a bit about that, actually, the, 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 the care fees report actually later on today. Is that in terms of the, the kind of recommission activities, what we wanted to do was really get in towards how we retain our care workforce in the wider care sector. Because we know that's been an issue in Sheffield and that's led to some of the instability. And that also comes back to kind of Angela's point earlier on about culturally appropriate care, that we didn't have the diversity that, that we wanted. So as part of the recommission activities, what we've inbuilt in that is, is a process by which we start to get to the foundation living wage, which is what we want to achieve. We've worked closely with unions, particularly, you know, to go and work to the ethical charters. And that's been part of our process that we've undertaken. We've also involved unions in the tender for the home cares and the evaluation of that. Because we thought it was really important to work closely with unions and make them, you know, really, really focus on workforce retention rates and do that together. And then sort of third, the other key thing is that through the workforce boards, that's actually co-chaired by a colleague from health, but also a colleague from skills for care. And we've got representatives right from the care sector around it. And what we've really, as part of the workforce board, what they will do is work with the sector so that we could do three big things. Is improve retention across the wider sector, particularly with all our recommissioned and successful providers that will come into place. And that's part of the core work that we'll do next year. Secondly, to focus on that trajectory towards getting to the foundation living wage so that all our care staff are paid a good wage. But also that, that we value our care staff, both employed and unemployed by the council. I see them all as, you know, as, as part of our work that we do. And, and, and third, that we have clear learning and development and retention programmes throughout the whole care sector and part of our recommissionary contracts. So that we are absolutely valuing our workforce. And I think for me, the power of the workforce board is going to be, is because it's a collaborative across our care sector, skills for care, health colleagues and, and wide, and unions. What I'm really, really hopeful for is that we will get into the space of really getting to, to, to a meaningful change across the sector. And we're doing it in a very collaborative way. So, so, so that's a, and what I would invite members to do is, if it's okay, is I could invite you to meet with the workforce board, I think, with this, because I think it'd be good to meet with colleagues and to really use this as a way to, to go and support engagement and which is a crucial and underpinning part of, of care basically.
Thanks, Alexis. Ruth, one more question then.
May I just comment back on that, that we also have a commitment to the Unison Ethical Care Charter. And I wonder, in that conversation that Alexis has just proposed with the workforce board, did you call it? Whether it might be possible to, to go back to that Unison Ethical Care Charter and examine the points under the three stages? And just do a little audit of where we sit with all of those recommendations in the Unison Charter? Would that be possible to undertake that exercise, Chair?
Okay, no, that sounds like potentially a good thing. We'll work through that in a moment. Kevin?
Thank you, Chair. I often think, you know, in my day job as well, we don't do enough in terms of getting out into schools and colleges and promoting careers. You know, I ended up in the career that I ended up in because, because of something that I saw at, at school. And I think certainly there's more work that we could do in that, that across the whole spectrum of, of adult social care careers. Because, you know, you want people to have that, kids to have that idea in their heads in terms of that's what they want to be and that's where they want to go.
Yeah, I think that makes perfect. So actually, it just reminded me, the last day, working day before Christmas, I had a coffee with a young woman who for her, you know, people do two weeks' work experience, don't they? And, and she, and I mean, I thought the fact she tracked me down and had a conversation with me and I've set her up so that she can do that placement. But I, I, out of that, lots of things occurred to me. Because one of the things I was, I, I began to think when I met her, we could actually look at things like schools and care homes in the area and having young people who might be interested going in to be friends, to talk. We're obviously not going to ask them to do care for people, but you could, because it would be, I, I mean, at first I was thinking about, because I remember a scheme when I was at school, but obviously that was a very long time ago. But we used to go and visit people. I think we probably have too many obstacles in our way to do that. But I thought a link between a school and a, a, two or three care homes, if they were, and, and that would allow people who were interested to test it out. We do go into schools and we do talk to people, but again, it's, it's having the capacity to do enough of that. But I think that is definitely something we need to do.
Thank you. Absa?
Thank you, Chair. It was just really coming on from the question that Angela gave earlier about ensuring diversity in the workforce from all different backgrounds. I mean, it's in the nicest possible way. I did, wasn't reassured by your answer. I think there definitely needs to be something a little bit more specific in terms of this is where we are. We know that there needs to be more that's done, but this is where we plan to be. And I think just giving vague answers of, we know we're not very good at the moment and we need to do better, for me, really isn't good enough. I think we need to be a bit more specific in terms of recognising what needs to be done, but not just in the actual action, but giving ourselves targets. So if we know that there's something that needs to be done within a specific timeframe, I know it's not always achievable in the short term, but at least in five years' time, you would say that, you know, we want a specific percentage of a certain tier of the workforce to be from diverse backgrounds. I just think that saying we're going to work with universities and blah, 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 it's, it's not really sort of a, a good enough answer. I think with the Race Equality Commission, there were specific targets that we need to work towards. And I think the council has been explicit in the work that it wants to do. So I just think it needs to be more action focused with specific targets in mind, rather than just sort of saying open ended, we know, we know we need to do more. It's not good enough because I think we all know that that's the position.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I realise I was vague because we haven't got to that. I guess we're, we're at this level and that's, that's what we've got to get on with next. So I absolutely agree with you. I think we, we do need to, to have targets and be, be much clearer. I'm not comfortable not being clear.
Could we have some feedback, Chair? Maybe it's something that comes on an agenda item about where we are now and where we're going to be in the future, just to make it more specific and, and sort of something that we know is, is being worked on.
I've got a suggestion on that, but what I'm going to bring Andrew in, but I also know that Alexis wants to respond as well. So let's just have Andrew and then Alexis, then let's try and wrap up something that will make sure we get what we need to on, on future updates.
Thank you for bringing that up because I was going to come back in. I think maybe we can have it on the work programme for next year. Maybe we can agree in that meeting that we have. But I, my point was also about not just having more people from minoritised community and diversity at the lower ranks. I want to see people at a high level in adult social care, in the council and in other, in other organisations. They're actually the leaders in that, because that is the thing is, I don't want to see more care workers from minoritised communities necessarily. Although we do have a lack of understanding sometimes of the care in that area, you know, to cater for people from different communities in the care sector. But we, I, I want us to have a plan to retain employee, people from a diverse backgrounds. And that's not just in terms of being from different ethnic groups, but also people with disabilities, people, you know, with other protected characteristics. But also having people at all levels of care, so not just at the bottom of the pile. That is really important because until we have people in the room here that represent our communities, we're going to have a problem.
Thank you. Alexis?
Apologies. So just, just thought I'd come back on the questions, ask about diversity because I think it's a really important point. And on page eighty of the strategy, there is, and it falls to a delivery plan. It has specific actions around, around supporting diversity, inclusion and quality. And specifically, what these are about are, are first of all, addressing concerns relating to workforce equality and diversity as raised with ISACMA, the report that we commissioned, and also the Race Equality Commission report. Secondly, to remove the barriers that people may face in terms of equality and diversity by ensuring that our workforce reflects. And that's the key point for me. And the recommissioning that we talked about in terms of kind of home care and supportive living, exactly as part of the recommissioning activity has been about saying contractually, we want to see a far more diverse workforce. So that is part of our contractual process and going ahead. But also internally within the council, one of the key things within the, the actions was also to look at what recruitment processes. And as part of that, what I've commissioned is a look with kind of colleagues, I'm actually working with colleagues now within HR, to look at bringing somebody in, to relook at our recruitment processes within the council so that we practically get a very clear focus on, particularly with adult care, is both mobility upwards, but also who we're recruiting in and going forward as part of that. And then the third, the fourth, the fourth kind of part for me was also about the partners and communities organisation co-designing activity and which we have around communities across Sheffield. Because we had the recruitment fair in the town hall, but what we wanted to do was stretch that out to communities, particularly communities which are seldom heard from. And so that's part of the, the, one of the actions as well. And then finally, it's also about the education and training offer. Because one of the things that we came from, particularly from the SACMA report as well as the Race Equality Commission and also some of the work that we've done, is actually looking at the, the actual training offer before people come in. And it's whether we could create like a health and social care academy ourselves locally in Sheffield, which helps us to go and do this. So that's part of the work that's in here. But finally for me is what we've been looking at as part of our commission activities is actually commissioning an organisation who, you know, who are well known to us to go and lead the specific piece around diversity and promoting on our behalf. And I think that will be a way in which we do this meaningfully, but actually get into the practical actions. One of the key things that, that is part of the recommendation state is bringing back updates every six months. updates every six months. Because that, for me, is such a poignant issue in terms of workforce, that, that, that I think, you know, we need to continue to make sure that as officers, we are doing what we said we would do. But equally, that we keep this as a live agenda, because if we don't get the workforce right in cross-social care, then the rest of it will, will fall, basically. So, so that's what's really important. But what I was really welcome to do is work with members, you know, particularly out with us, to say, let's make sure that the actions that's in the strategy continue to develop and grow, particularly around diversity and inclusion, so it reflects everything that you're seeing. And we have part of the workforce board, and the reason why I brought the care sector around, that whole board, it was not only to be collaborative, but to be target and outcome objective focused as well. So that's, that's a key part of that. And I think the meeting with the board would be a really good way to promote engagement in this, this crucial year for us. Hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you. Unless there's any more questions, I'm just going to suggest a couple of things, really. Firstly, I think I would just be accept, I would put the committee, we, we accept the recommendations as they are, but there's a few other points that we didn't make that I think we can pick up in slightly different ways. So firstly, there's, I think there's three particular points. Alexis, you have suggested that we meet with the workforce board. I suppose if we can just minute that and we will take that as an opportunity for committee members, if, if people are comfortable with that. There was a point about bringing back, something about compliance with the, the care charters we've signed up to. Can I suggest, Alexis, that I picked up in the next final update, if not before? But I think crucially, given the discussion we've had, I'm going to suggest that when we have the previously, the previously discussed discussion with co-chairs and deputy chair around the work plan before the end of this year, we give consideration to an early item, picking up some of the diversity and race equality points that have been made today, because I think they've been made strongly and rightly. And I think some consideration to, to earlier progress and planning on that would be in line with what I've heard in the committee today. Does that sound okay to you? So we would accept the recommendations as they are, but make notes that we will go and, and bring back actions on those three points I've mentioned. Is that okay? So is everyone happy to accept the recommendations today? I don't see any dissent. I think we are all agreed? That's great. Okay. Thank you all. Okay. On to our next item, item 10, which is to approve our advocacy services plan. I think we've got Avi here to present this. Oh, and Catherine, it seems. Sorry, it's, for those that are watching the webcast, there's a big screen, so I can't always see what's behind, who's behind the screen. It's a, it's a mystery. Welcome both.
Hi, I'm Avi, I'm a commission officer in Sheffield City Council, with a focus on learning disabilities and advocacy is one of the areas I focus on. In essence, this is a paper talking about an extension. But just to set the scene about this, for the last four years, we've been waiting for some central government key legislation changes around what we call liberty protection safeguards, which is due to replace deprivation of liberty, which has delayed in a way some transformation and some update and review of the advocacy services in Sheffield. The overall reports that we're seeing is that the, the service is positive, but there is a number of small gaps in the city. I guess in essence, without going into too many details of this report, is what we're asking for is this additional year to be able to plan and to be able to engage communities in order to deliver a better advocacy and more inclusive advocacy service moving forwards. This report details the financial constraints, it details the access to different types of advocacy in, in the city at the moment. And the recommendation is for a year extension. But because we're working back on, on our commission cycle, by June, we'll be reporting and talking about how we, what we're doing for the next steps. So that's something we're already exploring. So while we're coming to this extension, we've already been doing work in the background to look at what we're doing moving forwards. And that's just a little summary, without taking out too many, too much time.
Thank you. Just to say, if there's any questions, just, just to ensure that if anyone wants to refer to the two pages, which is part of the closed appendix, please do flag that up. Absa?
I'll, I'll not get into the specifics, so it's all technicalities at the moment, just renewal of contract. I, I didn't actually know that this service existed with CAB, and I've had lots of people asking for this kind of advice, and I've had to refer them to you solicitors to, to try and pick up the, the support that's needed. I know that this is a little bit before it actually gets to any legal representation that's needed. I think the query that I've got, and I'm not sure how you work this into the contract, is given the, the people that you're working with, the vulnerabilities that they have, given that the CAB at the moment is not doing a huge amount of face-to-face, can you ensure that this contract, even though you're extending, there is an element of face-to-face that's there for these particular clients? Because I just think it's, it's not workable over the phone and it's not workable via emails. And I think if we're renewing the contract, we should have an element of, we tell them this is what we require for our clients going forward. I mean, this is probably a separate discussion for a different committee about the, the CAB and how they're dealing with clients. But I think for this particular contract, given the vulnerabilities, there should be more face-to-face rather than over the phone.
Definitely. I, I completely agree. And I would say although this is part of the CAB, it's, it's completely separate than the advice services. So this is a hub, so it's, although the CAB oversee a disability Sheffield, I remember in the hub, Cloverley for a member in the hub, and all the advocacy that's specified in this is actually all face-to-face already.
Thank you. Are there any more, more questions? Ruth?
Yeah, just quickly wanted to ask about, it does mention that there were resource pressures this year that prevented the re, a retendering. Just wondered if that's been addressed? Will we be in the same position next year? Is there an intention to go into another, say, five-year contract? What will the timescale throughout this year to make that happen?
Definitely. Part of the appendices talks about a delivery programme. For those familiar with the Adult with Disabilities framework, so that was a pressure within my team personally, we've, that's been tendered and that's been awarded. So we do have the additional capacity and that's, that's work that I've already started. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more questions. Oh, sorry, Absa, of course.
Just, just very quickly, how is this service advertised? So given that we as members don't really know about this, how, how would the general public know that this service is available to them?
Most of these statutory services are advertised via the access route. So it would either be via social care and the social workers, or it'd be through hospitals and health professionals. The generic LD advocacy, for instance, and that is advertised through Disability Sheffield. But with your comments today, Councilwoman Hamad, I'll, I'll need to review that and look at how we, how we get the message out wider.
Thank you. I might, I might add a comment that I think, looking at the demand for this service over the last few years, you know, there, there's clearly some evidence that, 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 that people can, that people can find it. But I think it's always worth taking bullet points, especially when we're looking at the full retender about, about how we are doing the best to ensure people can find these services. So if I can just help, we'll turn to the recommendations we've got on page 136, the two recommendations there, to the, the approval, continuation of the current commission striking extension and endorsed proposal to retender, the advocacy services are coming to the committee, what I guess is a as-yet undefined meeting in the early part of next council year. Is everyone happy with that? Not seeing a dissent, all agreed? That's great. Thank you all. Okay. On to item 11, where I think Catherine will probably stay for, which is the approval of care fees. Again, I just want to point the committee to, we have a closed appendix, if anyone wants to refer to anything within that, please flag that up. And we will, and the same with officers too, of course. We will then stop the webcast and ask anyone that needs to leave to leave and we can discuss that, not a problem. The other thing just to point out is that yesterday, there was another supplementary part to the report published, which was a letter from the Sheffield Care Association, which is circulated to members and copies are available today, if anyone needs them. Okay. And we've got Liam here as well. Thanks both.
Thanks, yes. Hi, I'm Catherine Bunton, the head of commissioning for adults. And our fees report sets out recommended fee rates for adult social care in 2023/24, with targeted investment to support our duties around market sustainability. The fee rates for home care, enhanced supported living, supported living, day activities and short breaks have been previously agreed as part of commissioning strategies presented to committee in 2022 with subsequent tendering processes. And those contracts are due to start from April 2023. As well as the increases in fees for these services, it's, it's important, it's useful to know that the commissioning strategies are around delivering new models of care, which support our strategic aims of improving outcomes and promoting independence. And as are ways of working change and improve, this should impact positively on the sufficiency and the quality of our provider markets, as well as value for money and efficiency. A number of other fee rates in the report and recommendations are proposed to increase in line with inflation, and the detail of that is set out in the reports. But what we are asking for is a request to increase the standard rate for care homes to £630 a week. That recommendation follows consultation with the care home sector in the city on a proposed rate of £620 a week. The summary of the consultation responses is provided in appendix one. And as the Chair notes, there's a recently added addendum letter from the Sheffield Care Association. In addition to the recommendation on fee rates, the report asks for committee's approval to undertake a cost of care exercise with non-standard provision that will support our work in the care homes transformation programme, which members might remember from our February committee discussion. And just to summarise, there's one point of clarification, actually, sorry. In paragraph 3.7.21, we talk about the proposed rate for care homes reaching the lower quartile from the fair cost of care exercise, which is a significant number of homes and beds in the city. But I do want to make sure that the committee knows that that fair cost of care rate was related to 2022/23. And so those, those costs may have changed, but we don't have the detail behind that. And yeah, just our summary really, the priority for us is of course, that the people in Sheffield are able to access high-quality services that meet their needs and support them to live the lives they want to live. Commissioning supports that vision by developing and securing those services at the best value for money for people who purchase care, not only the council, but people who self-fund and are partners across the system. And I am happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Catherine. What questions we've got? I can start if that's helpful. I just wanted to, could you just outline for committee, Catherine, just some basic details of the form of consultation that happened? How did that happen? And then what kind of major concerns or issues were raised, particularly by providers as part of that? And how have we sought to incorporate those, those issues within the final fee rates we've, you recommended today? Thank you.
Certainly. So a, a key activity was the fair cost of care exercise in itself. That's quite often how previous year's consultations have worked, by working with providers to understand their costs and their pressures. As we've done that quite extensively, that information was used in, in developing our proposals and the commissioning plan for care homes that came in February. In addition to that, we sent out a formal sort of a questionnaire document to all the care homes in the city, which asked for information around the fee rates that they were receiving from the council, whether they proposed any changes to wages, to the rates that they were charging self-funders, and to prioritise some of the risks and the issues that they thought that they were going to face in the next year. So a key amount of feedback was around the standard rate that the council pays and the difference between that and the fair cost of care outcome. I think that we have started to address that. And one of the reasons behind the recommendation for the extra £10 is to make some of that step change. We've also maintained the in-year increase that we gave using the fair cost of care grant last year. That's non-recurring funding in lots of ways, and the context, the national context around that has changed. So that, that is a significant step for Sheffield. Some of, aside from that rate, workforce pressures came out as one of the most, the highest risk really, for the highest number of homes, particularly around having to have a high use of agency staff, which impacts on quality and continuity, continuity of care, but also the staffing costs that they have. So we're looking now at how we can support the care sector to work more collaboratively in the contracts that they have in securing agency workers and seeing if they can get best value there, as well as seeing if we can work in partnership with them and what we might be able to do with the council's own, own agency contracts. And I think as Alexis pointed out earlier, there's a, there's a link to the workforce strategy and workforce development programme that Janet presented, and bringing our providers into that conversation. The energy costs are particularly high, not only sort of nationally are we facing high energy costs, but it's particularly relevant for care homes which need to be warm 24 hours of the day. There's lots of conversations that we're having with national government about actually they need to do more to help us to meet those costs. That's not just in Sheffield, but particularly of interest to us. And we also want to work with the care home sector to work out where we might be able to support capital funding, capital investment to help impact on their energy efficiency. And we've done some of that already through our, in partnership with Business Sheffield, where we're running online workshops and webinars about recruitment, about energy efficiency. So I think what we're trying to do is that double-pronged approach of making sure that the fees that we pay are sufficient to deliver the quality of care that we need to provide, but also we're taking practical steps to address some of those issues and the risks that the market faces, to bring those costs down, because we need to be making sure that, that we have that sustainable market and it keeps being sustainable in the future.
Thank you, Catherine. Any more questions from committee? Or I have another further question that I will, that I will ask. So just, that's all really helpful. Thank you. And as I referred to earlier, there's, there was a letter that's been sent to its committee from the Sheffield Care Association. And one, and one of the, what points that they mentioned in there is the point you, you made about this, the, the cost of care, the full cost of care grant, which is money received by Sheffield Council and, and other councils, isn't it? And they mentioned a figure that, that the council has received for 2023. Can you just explain how that funding, which is, I understand, you know, fixed and short-term, how does that work in terms of how we can allocate that to support the fee rate? And how does that work alongside us setting that rate, which is clearly a long-term rate? Thank you.
Hey, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll respond to that. So the, in the Autumn Statement in, in November, the government announced the, the funding that would, that would be coming through for local authorities for 23/24, and that included a statement on social care grants and associated grants. And the fair cost of care grant for 23/24 was a part of that announcement. That's now called the Market Sustainability and Improvement Fund. And that was confirmed at just over £6 million for 23/24. And that has been factored into the budget for next year. That was money that was anticipated for 23/24 and has already been factored into our business planning assumptions. The social care grant that was referenced in the letter was £48.2 million. That is the total amount of social care grant that the local authorities are expecting for next year. That grant is, is, as I say, the total amount, that's not additional, that's the total amount, much of which is already factored into the council's business as usual budgets. In March, on March the 1st, the council approved the budget for next year and described the additionality of the adult social care grant for next year. The, 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 the report described around £25 million increase in the grant for next year. Now, it's important to, to note that £12.6 million of that grant is already factored into adult social care budgets for next year. So part of that is the market sustainability. So part of that is the Market Sustainability and Improvement Fund. There is also a draw on that grant from a national increase to the National Living Wage, which was a pressure that was also announced in the Autumn Statement. So immediately, the costs for next year increased by over £6 million, and that additional grant was required to cover it. Some of the additionality is also a replacement for Independent Living Fund, which is ending, so is effectively not new money to the council. And the remainder was effectively a diversion from the grant that has come to the local authority to implement social care charging reform. Remember that that was delayed for around two years. It's unclear at this point whether that funding is going to be required to deliver the social care charging forms when that comes in in two years' time. And this committee is very aware of the financial burden that that will pose all local authorities when it does come in. And so effectively, that money is non-recurring and needs to be retained for that purpose. In the meantime, it can be treated as one-off and will be needed to support pressures, one-off pressures, and potentially budget risks going into next year.
Thank you. And just one final one from me. Obviously, recall the paper we had at February's committee meeting, which talked about the future of, you know, commission development of the care home market in the city. Can you just give us a brief update on the timescale that we think we might be looking at for that longer-term piece of work in terms of recommissioning of that sector? Thank you.
Yes, so over the next six months, we want to continue the development work with the sector in terms of looking at what our specification might mean. I think the other thing that's noted in the report, but we should mention is that we've got one single rate in Sheffield and our standard rate. But actually, if you look at our trajectory and the future of residential settings in the city, it's probably going to include more people with more complex needs. So there's lots of work around developing and understanding of the cost of that and how we best deliver it in the next six months. And then we are intending to be out to tender for a framework in the autumn so that by next April, we're in a much stronger contractual position. And then the 12 months following that helps us move into some of the more transformational and different contracting arrangements we might want to see, to do some of the market shaping and reshaping, in fact, including improving occupancy rates in the city.
Thank you very much. Thanks both for your responses. If anyone wants to say before I turn us to the recommendations that we've got on page 28 of the supplementary reports pack. There are quite a lot of recommendations here, 10 recommendations. So I just ask them to just take a moment to make sure we're familiar with all of those. Page 28 or page two of the, it's page two of the report, if people have that individually. Is everyone familiar with those? And happy to approve any dissent to those 10 recommendations that we have on page 28. I'm not seeing any dissent, so I think we're all approved there, we're agreed, okay? Great, that's agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Helen, we now have got item 12, which is approving our Citywide Older Adults and Aging Well Strategy Delivery Plan. We've got Jo and Nicola here to present today, so welcome both. And yeah, please, and that's further on in our report pack. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Jo Pass. I'm the Assistant Director for Living and Aging Well.
Hi, I'm Nicola Rafferty. I'm the interim Assistant Director for Living and Aging Well.
And the paper we're presenting for you today is seeking your approval of our delivery plan and our market position statement. And our Living and Aging Well Delivery Plan really feels like an exciting development for adult social care in Sheffield, and it's how we will deliver on our commitments in our strategies and the outcomes. Our focus is really on enabling people to live the lives they want to live and live as independently as possible. There is a common misconception that prevention is something that happens before somebody has eligible social care needs, but that is absolutely not true. And in the core of our work is that prevention and enablement principle, so that in every stage of somebody's journey working with us, we're looking at how we can enable them to live independently. Every time somebody's needs change, it creates an opportunity for us to work with that older adult or that adult with dementia, to enable them to live as independently as we possibly can. Nicola, we'll just briefly talk to you about some of the next steps on our delivery plan. But I just wanted to acknowledge that we've taken some considerable steps and then leaps thus far. We've done a lot of work post the pandemic in terms of reviewing the support that people with very high-cost home care packages had at the time where there were fewer support options available. So we've done that review work. We have also, as committee is also aware, really done some recovery work for our equipment and adaptation service, and we're driving and close to getting to the point where people, it will be six weeks from the point where somebody is referred to the point where they have an assessment for that equipment and adaptation service. We've also launched our transformation of the home care and residential care. It's been discussed briefly today and it's also been discussed in committee papers. And on the 27th of February, we moved to our specialist living and aging well services, which aligned all our community social work teams to our primary care networks. It launched our specialist care home service and a response and enablement team. Nicola, do you want to come and tell the next steps?
Yeah, so the heart of what we do is relationships and culture, and that's having a positive culture and that of learning. Partnerships are central to delivering our vision and strategy. For example, ourselves working together consistently across North and South, our management team and you as members, citizens of Sheffield, providers, key stakeholders and our workforce. Embedding the service, which has recently gone live, which Jo's just mentioned, we're also looking to review our hospital discharge offer with the person and their journey at the heart of what we do. Learning and listening to feedback for continuous improvement and utilising the resources that we have. So we're looking for approval today of our delivery plan and the market position statement, and look forward to coming back to update you on our progress and journey. Happy to take any questions between us.
Right, I mean, seeing any questions, yes. I'd find it really interesting, Jo said initially around that, you know, the prevention is not just about, you know, absolutely does occur, you know, and should be essential to what we do with people that do eligible care needs. And I would just, it's interesting to listen to that in, I don't know if you were present for the early report we had from Sandy and Alexis on that wider prevention intervention strategy. I wonder how we can really make sure there's an integral link between what we're trying to do in communities and health in communities and the prevention work that's done by your team? And how we can make sure that this strategy is, and delivery plans really, it works and really works to inform that work going forward? Because ultimately, it is all about kind of keep people independent, safe and well. And I wonder where you think those, that these two pieces of work can work together well, really?
Okay, so I think obviously that the strategic direction that's outlined in all our papers gives us the structure of what we're doing. But the answer on the ground of what's going to make that happen is the relationships that we have. That's what makes the difference. And so I think the fact that our community teams are going to be, are aligned to the primary care networks, and that we're going to have our team managers linking to the clinical leads in the primary care networks, we're going to have our home care services wrapped around, again, around that primary care network. And there's a real recognition there that, and all the voluntary sector and community and faith groups, by working together, by having those close relationships, that's how we can capture and the opportunities to prevent and to enable people as much as we can.
Thank you. That's really important. I've got Angela now, thank you.
Just a comment, really. Thank you very much for this and all the work, you know, leading up to it and the briefings we've had before today. I think one, you know, to come back to what the Chair has just said, I think I think we maybe with our partners, you know, at all levels, maybe we need to start changing the language that we use, because I think, for me, the word prevention is a bit of a problem word, because it can mean different things to different people. And I think most of the time it's used to, like, prevention of healthcare, preventing someone going to hospital, preventing someone from needing care. I've heard in quite a lot of forums the use of the word health creation. And I think it's, we want to create the conditions for people to live at home as much as possible, because when people live at home, they are happier and they live longer. And we want to give them the tools to live independently and happily at home. We want people to be able to do what they want, what they enjoy in their communities. And I think we, maybe we need to look at the kind of the language that we use and eventually switch or change the conception, you know, what people like. When we say prevention, what do we mean? I think it's really important that we have that message.
Absolutely, and I think that switch to health creation is really valuable. Notice that we talk about enablement, not re-ablement. And I think the term re-ablement can be quite narrow, because it implies it's about people potentially regaining skills that they had. But for some people, actually, those skills are no longer able or appropriate. And actually, we have to find other ways around things to still enable the person to be as independent as they can. We could probably have a whole separate committee on language, but I totally agree with that point in relation to the term prevention.
Abso?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's just following on from a point that George mentioned earlier about the community development workers that we heard in the earlier agenda items and how that will fit in with the delivery here. Because it feels very much like the outreach into communities is going to be key to this. Clinical, you know, the primary care clinical leads is important, but I would question sometimes their knowledge of what happens in communities as well, because I think a lot of this is about preventing, using that word that Angela doesn't want us to use. But, you know, the issues around poor housing, poor diet, all of these different things lead on to then sort of the services that have to be provided, the more critical level or preventing people from accessing primary and secondary care. So I just think in terms of the community support workers, what linkage is happening there? And then I had to message somebody earlier on, because I wasn't sure whether this was relating to a previous strategy, the sort of the age-friendly Sheffield, and how this links with that. Is this just sort of the operational side of things? How are we linking with people from the legacy of what was age-friendly Sheffield? Because that was community-driven, and they feel that that was sort of developed and then left on a shelf somewhere, and then nothing really evolved from it.
I think in relation to age-friendly Sheffield, I'd be very keen to get that off the shelf and have a look at that and look at the learning from that and make sure that we build that in to our thinking and our development. We definitely have work to do in relation to making those links with the communities. I was very interested in about the training you spoke about earlier. I would say is we do have a dedicated officer now called Kate Dammel, who is focused on community engagement, co-production, devolve, decision-making, and certainly within the specific example that is coming to my mind is in relation to the transformation of our residential care. Kate is a key officer, has a key work stream, looking at how we absolutely engage with people that are living in residential care, may need to go into residential care, their carers. So we make sure that our offer reflects the diversity and reflects what people want moving forward in terms of residential and nursing care in Sheffield. But I think that we have, we need to make sure that that is a strand that has equal prominence in every area of development. And I very much heard the point you made earlier, actually, about how we connect to the voices that we don't often hear, and that is about those grassroots community connections.
Thank you. Have we got any more questions or comments?
Can I just make a point? So the person that deals with community development is a wonderful lady that works in the council called Mai Mustafin. She's done these courses for many, many, many years and is very, very experienced. And I would just say get her to be training people to, she was the very first person that trained me in community development work many, many years ago, and she's still doing it. But she's just very low-level in the council, she just gets on with what she does. So she's one of those gems that you need to use.
Nicola, let's come back on that, and Alexis.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the courses and Mai, and it's really actually heartening to hear that they're still going on, so, yeah.
Thanks. Alexis, do you want to go in?
Just following on from your actually email, Ellen, today is what we're going to do is make connections across so that we can build that training to adult, absolutely to adult care. So that's an absolute promise from today. I think it's really, really great. And for us to build upon it. And one of the key things is when we were developing the early intervention paper, is one of the things that Sandy and I did was said, what we want to do is make sure exactly what Jo and Nicola were talking about earlier on, was making sure there was a golden thread through everything that we do. And that's, I think, Angela's pointing out that language is really important. And one of the things that we talked about was actually how do we make this more simpler and straightforward in terms of, you know, trying to actually put a narrative that actually makes it very straightforward for Miss, you know, I always think about Mr and Mrs Smith. What does this mean for the individuals and communities at the end of this? So they don't hear kind of officers speak, so it's big what people hear is actually what does this mean to you in terms of outcomes and impact from the point of view of individuals? So that's absolutely what we are keen to do. And one of the key things within the report by Jo and Nicola was the focus on outcome statements and I statements. So that what we do is we measure our success by the outcomes in which people are telling us. It's important, and that is that baseline. It comes back to actually that conversation earlier on. It's how do we know we're making a difference? And we'll know we're making a difference by what people tell us and communities tell us. And this is why it's so fundamental in going forward. And can I just say a big thanks to Jo and Nicola, who have done a huge amount of work in trying to take forward significant shifts?
Thank you. Thank you to both of you. I'm just going to now turn to page 160, where we have our recommendations. Three recommendations on this report. We're okay with those recommendations. Any dissent? No, I think we are all agreed, if that's okay? Brilliant, that's agreed. Thank you, thank you very much both. And then next, we turn to Alexis for our DAS report. Thank you.
So I've got a very brief update today, because actually all the other committee reports today kind of say all. And particularly, we're focused on building upon our strategy, which is coming later on today. I would like to start off by saying though, as we come to the last committee of the season, as a thank you to all the people that we work in partnership with across the city and beyond, to my leadership team, who have been really fantastic over this last year, and really taken forward a significant amount of work in a short space of time. And I'd also like to say thank you to all members who've really been with us, and also to our partners in Democratic Services, you know, who have really, really been with us over the last year as we went through a significant journey. And, you know, one of the key things for me is when we started in, really, in the committee in June, was retaining that focus on outcomes for individuals and for communities. That's what's important, and that focus on getting adult care to be outstanding. And I'm never shy about my ambitions for adult care in the city, because I think, you know, we want to be the outstanding service that actually delivers that excellent quality care for people, that we deliver the very best for our workforce across the city. And we do that in collaboration with members, with partners, with individuals and carers, and we get to that very best place. But I always remember in June last year, when I sat down with members and said, this is going to be a busy year. We've got quite a lot to do because we've got... We've got quite a lot to do because we've got a lot of local and national agendas to respond to, as well as the improvement programme, as well as actually getting to a sustainable financial position. We had a lot to do within a short space of time. But equally, you know, and I'm very proud to say as we come to our last committee, that we've achieved a lot, you know. And that's why we thank our members. We have now got a baseline in terms of where we're at in terms of what outcomes for individuals. That gives us a focus and priority in how we develop our services and going forward. We've improved our performance across all the areas. And, you know, we've really made headway into areas that have been longstanding performance issues, which I'm really proud of. And then equally, what we've done is we've developed a lot of strategies and a lot of baselines. And councillor George Lyndes has always asked me questions, what's the baseline? And the baseline is generally nothing. It's, you know, we've, you know, and we've developed them all in partnership and collaboration. And what these all do is gives a really strong foundations for going forward. And that to me is the key thing as we go into 2023, 24. We go into 2023, 24 with a more positive, with a really positive outlook, a focus on the future and not a focus on delivering the very best for people at Sheffield. And one of the key things that I'm really, we can just commit to doing 2023, 24 is to really shout out about all the good things that we do in Sheffield. I think that's really important because we do a lot of good things in Sheffield and our teams right across the piece do a lot of good things. And actually, over the last few weeks, we've, Andrew, we've all here going to speak later on, and we actually spoke at a national conference around how we're trying to improve lives and outcomes for people with lenzability and who are artistic across Sheffield. You know, we've got a social work conference coming up, our very first social work conference coming up in 24th of March. We are taking, we spoke nationally about some of our joint work that we're doing with health colleagues, particularly around what work was planning. And equally, we are really developing good relationships, you know, across the piece to really deliver more joined up services, which is what counts for people. And that is what I want us to really kind of highlight as we go into 2023, 24, is to really promote the good work that we are doing. And I think about it from the point of view of adults in the city, you know, I really want adults in the city to feel confident that as we go forward, not only they're experiencing great care, but what they've got is leadership and a commitment to that care. That care to them and that care to the workforce that deliver care to them as well. And that's what I would want us to be, our legacy and our focus in going forward. So I just wanted to kind of say that as that piece and to say, you know, final thank you to everybody who supports us on this journey so far. And I know it's been quite a lot. And I think that the opportunity going into 2023, 24 is absolutely more focused on the workshops, the discussions, the policy development, the exciting, really exciting opportunities, the innovation as we go forward. And that's an exciting place to be. So I'm going to end up there.
Thanks, Alexis. Got a question from Andrew and then Steve?
It's not a question, it's just a comment. Thank you for saying that and thank you to everybody for all the hard work and preparing for all the, you know, briefings that we've had. I mean, I don't know how many we've had, but a lot. But, you know, before each briefing, there's a lot of work from officers that have to present. So thank you for that. And on top of that, we need to be super ready to go for the CQC inspection sometime soon as well.
Thanks. Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to endorse that. I do think that, as I said earlier, it's been, we've learned it's been a very busy sort of portfolio with a lot of challenges, both, you know, both external from, with government legislation and funding and so on, as much as trying to put the service on a better footing. And we couldn't have, I don't think that we could have done that without the excellent support that we've had from officers and also other members of the committee as well, so, yeah.
Thanks, Steve. I mean, listen, the answer to really endorse what Andrew and Steve said, I think, you know, it's all from you, Alexis, and all the others. It's been fantastic this year and, yeah, it's been a very busy year and look forward to the future. So thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, item 14, which is the Adults' Care Financial Update and Refund Recovery Plan and working with Liam for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Hello, everyone. So this is a regular report and it delivers on our commitment to transparent and accountable financial reporting. In this report, we're providing assurance around our delivery of our financial recovery plan in 22, 23, our outturn forecast for 22, 23, and a targeted look at the management of voids and vacancies to support our budget position. We've also got an update on the section 75 agreement for 22, 23 and a look ahead to 23, 24. The forecast in part one is holding steady with last, from last time and steady actually over the last several months with a forecast of 16, nearly 16 and a half million pounds against 25 million pounds savings target. The forecast for next year is to be just under a million pounds short of achieving the 22, 23 target. So by the end of next year, we will be, we're forecasting to almost entirely achieve that saving just short of one million pounds needed by way of mitigation going into next year. Appendix one provides the detail on that. In terms of forecasted spend, we're looking at a forecasted overspend of nine million against the 145 million net budget, which is an improvement of just over one and a half million pounds from last month. And that's attributable largely to forecast hospital discharge funding, which we're now able to build into the forecast. Nearly nine million, so 8.7 million of that nine million is directly attributable to the non-delivery of savings, which is a positive indication of the underlying position. Almost all of that overspend due to non-delivery of savings, which we'll catch up with next year. The key risk going into 23, 24 is obviously the scale and pace of the savings that are required to make next year as well as the catching up of the slip savings that we need to do from this year, particularly whilst meeting our duties under the CARE Act, preparing for CQC assurance and responding to service pressures. Section 1.4 provides a more detailed look at the achievement of savings around voids and vacancies on block contracts. And 23, 24 provides a summary of a risk assessment of our proposals for 23, 24. So appendix two is a full breakdown of 23, 24 and that will become the regular update template that we'll be using when we step into next year for reporting on the delivery of next year savings. Section 2.3 explores disabled facilities grant a little bit more. One of the biggest risks, or sorry, the biggest, one of the budget risks emerging for the Adult Health and Social Care Revenue Budget in 23, 24 are risks resulting from the pressure on DFG. It was reported to this committee in November that there was a risk that this grant would overspend. And this pressure is putting pressure on, financial pressure on services previously benefiting from DFG capital funding. Funding which was made available when DFG, you know, previous years when DFG would otherwise have underspent. So we're proposing to bring a report to committee in June, setting out how both citywide care alarms and the integrated community equipment pressures will be mitigated. Looking ahead to budget planning 24, 25, we're setting out a timeline, essentially planning underway in March, service level discussions taking place in April, in readiness for policy discussions with the committee in May around pressures serving service priorities, the statutory responsibilities and the need to set a balanced budget. We'll then move into proposal scoping in June. Ready to come back in July with proposals for members to consider and a start of the care fee rate setting process for 24, 25. Section four provides an update to the BCF process and I'll close there for questions.
Thank you, Liam. Got Angela.
It's not really a question, it's a suggestion because obviously we don't know who's going to be on the committee next year. And can I suggest that when we have the meeting regarding the work programme, we also look at the timeline for those. So we ensure that is, because what's worked really well for us as a committee is that we tackled the budget pressures in the summer. So by the end of August, we'd done most of them and we were well ahead of everybody else. And that's how things helped hugely with the challenge. And I know that we can't impose that on, you know, next year's chairs, whoever they might be, and deputies, et cetera. But at least we can suggest that because it's worked well, so we want to kind of keep that hopefully. You know, you're making me anxious. It's like, it's all starting again, isn't it? It's like, oh my gosh. But it's because there is that pressure, that's why we worked really well because we had that pressure continuously on our shoulder and we really wanted to ensure that we got good results for people. So I think it was a good thing that we had so much pressure in the summer last year.
Thank you. I agree with that and I also think that the business planning timeline included here in page 99, is it? Is helpful in terms of helping current and future committee understand, you know, the important dates for next year because there's been a lot of discussion around the need for ensuring that members are involved in the bright point in budget discussions. We've done very well timeline this year, but yeah, I'm sure it can always improve next year. Are there any other points other than, we have to thank Liam and your team for all the fantastic updates you've provided this year. There's been an awful lot of updates on finance and I think, you know, we can note that if you look through back reports, there is actually a theme of continuous improvement in that financial position throughout the year. Still in a difficult position, but it's certainly in the right direction. So that's really positive. Thank you very much. And next on to item 15, we've got the Social Care Strategy and Coaching Improvement to the Delivery Plan progress update from John Verner.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief because I know you've had a long meeting and a busy agenda. We brought back to this to you at the end of the first year of the strategy. So it's agreed a year or so, well, exactly, almost exactly a year ago to the day last year. And we promised to bring back, we brought a delivery plan through in June and we promised to bring back an update. We've included a couple of other things in this report as well to start to bring the whole picture together around impact. So I think the first thing, the first thing of only five things I want to say just to manage your expectations on time is that this is real stuff. The strategy can feel quite lofty and away from real life, but actually it has real impact on real people, which is why we're all here and no doubt including you. And this is how we create structure in delivering what we want to achieve, having agreed what we want to achieve. So this is, this is, this is real stuff that has impact and that's what we're trying to get into with this report. This provides the promised refresh, as I say, and an update. So you'll see in the appendix that has the fancy design on it that we've provided update on each of the actions that we agreed in the strategy delivery plan. So I'm pleased to say, so there's 48 actions overall, an ambitious agenda, I feel, I think we all feel. Of those, 41 are greens, are on target or delivered. The other seven, so that relates to our amber and relate to timescales rather than not agreeing it. So that's 85% on target or already delivered of all the actions we agreed there. And that, of course, is a collective effort across Alexis and all the leadership team and everybody working, you know, all the 1,200 or so people working in the council across adult social care and the 14,000 across the whole workforce that we've been talking about earlier. There are five new actions that we proposed to add to the delivery plan with fingers crossed for your approval today. These five all relate to things that have been discussed by the policy committee over 22, 23, your first year. So I suspect they won't be controversial, but obviously it is your gift to make that decision. The first one is to support the review of accommodation to identify opportunities to co-locate with healthcare and voluntary sector partners across the city, which has been a question you yourselves have raised when talking about primary care hubs in previous meetings. But also, this isn't just about, you know, having the right building. Actually, this is about facilitating further multidisciplinary working between ourselves and our partners to have joined up experience for the people across the city that are receiving our services or we're doing early work with. Secondly, to include the digital strategy and delivery plan which you agreed in February, using technology to make services easier to access, receive information, et cetera. So that obviously includes bringing together systems, et cetera, as well as the very obvious tech-enabled care and information advice elements that people directly use. Thirdly, to develop our climate impact delivery plan, which we've referred to several times in this committee and Catherine takes the lead on the leadership team for. But it was an omission from our original one. We know that is what this committee has asked for, but we're including it in the plan. Fourthly, developing an approach that understands the impact of changes in service delivery on diverse groups and sports equality of experience across race, equality, diversity and inclusion. So that relates to conversations you've been having earlier today even, but other things that are, we've talked, this committee has talked about this on a number of occasions and obviously is part of our, among many things. This is part of us sharing our commitment to taking forward the recommendations of the Race Quality Commission and that work further, which obviously you're all will have been involved in and aware of. And lastly, implement the Joint Health and Care Plan for Carers, which you agreed on a previous agenda, I believe, I believe February's agenda. So, and then the other thing and my last point is that the, one of the appendices provides a base, or actually a couple of the appendices provide a baseline. So we've mapped the outcomes from the strategy across various measures because one of the questions you ask us regularly is how do we know whether we're having impact? How do we know not just that we're completing the actions, but what is the impact with people? And so we wanted to be really transparent about providing a baseline here. Some of this is quite dated information actually. For instance, the ASCOF measures, the Adult Social Care Outcome Framework measures, the national measures actually are about to be refreshed. So I would expect they would probably be on the first, be available for the first committee back after the election. So some of those are quite dated measures. But anyway, we've provided our ASCOF progress, we've provided our, fully transparent about our progress against the council's delivery plan. And we've provided our, the first time we've run an I statement survey against the I statements in the strategy. And you can find this appendix, I think, four. And it highlights the kind of things that I'm sure you're hearing from your constituents and from the people that you are listening to across the adult social care system. So what that is telling us broadly at a very high level, and we provide all the detail in the report, that actually we're doing okay about choice and control and being listened to in terms of, in absolute terms compared to the other statements people are feeling. And you're seeing between 65 and 70% agreement around those kind of measures. We know that, and what we're doing particularly, you know, the lowest measures are mainly around ability to navigate the system and find out what services are available to make informed decisions, knowing what's available in your area. And we know, as has been referred to, that we're doing significant work around our information, advice and guidance. And the Sheffield Directory is the platform has been relaunched now and we're doing work around the website content and how that fits into our overall digital offer and that is in our forward plan, as I've noted. So having said I'll be brief, maybe I haven't achieved that, but I am concluding now and happy to take questions here or obviously outside if that is appropriate.
Thank you, John. That's a very comprehensive view of all of this. And thanks for, you know, I think the work you've overseen has really brought together a number of elements the committee's been looking at this year, which has been really, really helpful. And another reflection that we've had in discussion is the way that this sort of stuff is, should into next year and form what you could describe as the scrutiny function of this committee in terms of. what you could describe as the scrutiny function of this committee in terms of, you know, where we need to focus in in terms of understanding performance, you know, as well as, as well as focusing on delivery of, delivery of new strategies or elements, which clearly has been the focus of the year. Actually, how do we move into that scrutiny performance side? And I think, I think the work and the and the dashboards you're keeping here are immensely useful for that. So I'm, I'm after to be, I'm really grateful for that. Do we have any questions for John? Ruth?
No, not a question Chair, but really just a comment about what you've just said about the scrutiny function. So just I think we started the, the last municipal year in a slightly messy place with regards to scrutiny and the establishment of the subcommittee. I think we've got that worked out and that the, there is a distinction between what the scrutiny subcommittee undertakes and what this committee needs to undertake in terms of scrutiny. So I think we've made a clear distinction between health and care effectively. Although obviously there are crossovers and there always will be, but essentially that the subcommittee attends to N H S matters and that this committee possibly needs to develop a little bit its understanding of the scrutiny function on the social care side. Just a comment really going forward that it's perhaps been a little bit untidy this year and not, 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 I felt sometimes this committee has not entirely embraced the scrutiny function. Probably true for the other policy committees as well, to be honest, that that overview and scrutiny has been brought into the policy committees themselves and there's no call in, it's all done within committee. So it's just, yeah, just a little sort of watchword for going forward into the next year of the committee system.
On to that, well Angela wants to come in as well.
I'll be very brief on it. There's and you know, many of that is just comments and not asking for response. But the, the, two things. Firstly, we will be bringing back more regular reports on performance and outcomes and that. And actually Alexis has given, has recently given me that steer on on doing that a bit more and I think that aligns closely to what you've just said. So actually more visibility bound performance measures and measuring of impact, which is the information that allows you to, that supports your scrutiny function. I think the second thing is that, that we are aware that a lot of this, that it can be hard to scrutinize us when we're in a period of such big change and an awful lot of work coming through here. What we are going to do and I think Alexis and I have talked about it, bring it to the June committee is bring this together into an overall directorate plan that, that articulates it more clearly in a single place. And again, that, that summary should help facilitate you being able to ask questions and take, take that kind of overview, that classical overview of scrutiny function from the two thousand and eight.
Thank you John. Angela?
Just a comment about what Ruth just said. I, I agree in part, but not totally. I think maybe we can look at that training and when we do like the, you know, the beginning, the training for members who are on the committee, that could be part of that. But I think lots of the scrutiny of things that, items that have come here has happened in briefings and because the briefings have all been cross-party, we've asked lots of questions in those briefings and reports have changed and, you know, we have put things on that weren't there. So actually there's been an awful lot of scrutiny. It's just not been in the actual meetings. It's been in the briefings that have been cross-party and we've had some, some that have opened to the door committee. You know, we can decide the next year or, or members can go to all committees, but is, can everybody go to sometimes six hours of briefings a week? So I think there has been, I think a, a policy committee under the, the governance that we have is is slightly different to what we had before. I agree that the, it's really good that there is a separation between the, the health scrutiny committee and that is completely separate and it looks at the N H S. But I think from the adult social care, we have scrutinized an awful lot for hours and hours sometime in any one week. It's just it's not been with the cameras on. It's been in before the reports have even got here.
Okay, I'm not going to indulge a very long discussion on this, but Ruth, do you want to come back very briefly? We can have a longer discussion outside of it.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, Angela, I think it's, it's just a slightly complicated situation with the committee system and the policy committees undertaking that scrutiny function. So under the previous system, obviously there were members who sat on an overview and scrutiny committees, that was their job. That was what they did all, all, all year round. And now it's down to all members of all committees to whatever extent they're able to within their own time constraints to undertake that function. So I'm just pointing out really that it doesn't, you know, that function doesn't, it doesn't have a standalone commitment from a group of members. It has to sit within every policy committee. And I, I think that it's, it's a potential weakness of the committee system is the time, the time pressure, as you mentioned. So, you know, a committee can choose to leave it to the chairs who have their time provided by a special responsibility. That's all, the, all members of the committee can try to be involved more. It's something I think needs looking at and probably is being looked at through the governance review, I hope. But it's, I just want to comment really that part of the expectation of how this committee system would work may slightly have sort of glossed over the fact that members just simply can't afford the time to undertake every function of a committee themselves. And sometimes things do have to fall to the chair, to the chair role, which is probably disappointing for those who might have thought the committee system would literally involve all eighty-four members in all parts of decision-making. I think it's just, it's just how it is.
Thanks for that. I'm just going to bring Alexis in very briefly and I'm conscious me to close this item swiftly. Thank you.
Really good points and thank you to all. In terms of the scrutiny function, what we've tried to do this year is follow the constitution, as is just now. And that is that focus on the performance, the budgets and equally that thematic area linked to the, particularly with legal responsibilities. And, and it's, it's been a real challenge, you know, it has been a balancing act this year, which is I think borne out by the conversation. I think over the last year, what we have tried to do is bring forward papers particularly around safeguarding discharge, equipment adaptations and also our delivery upon the council's delivery plan, which includes assess, where, where performance for scrutiny by, by members and then the regular updates every six months into committee. And these have been part of the scrutiny aspect of the council to go and, of the committee to go and do. But I think what we've tried to do through this report, and it's one of the asks that came from members was bringing these together into one place, against outcomes, you know, on our strategy so that it's more straightforward and easier to follow, which was the context of this report, so that we've in a sense done a straightforward, here's where we're at at year end. And then going into next year, rather than having lots of separate reports, we'll have one report with update against outcomes for very much that, that kind of scrutiny function by, by members alongside with ongoing scrutiny of the budget, which is really, really important. And Angela mentioned earlier on about C Q C and one of the things I was really keen for members to be really involved in was scrutiny of adult care in terms of a preparation for care quality commission and also the, the focus on going ahead so that we're really able to evidence absolutely, you know, that, that strategic leadership to and how we are delivering outstanding, you know, getting to the point where we deliver outstanding services for the people of Sheffield. But certainly, you know, we, 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 we came to support and facilitate briefings, workshops and equally the, you know, the proposals from today to really support absolutely that scrutiny of adult care services. And I have a fundamental belief and I suppose this is me as a director of adult care, I'm going to say this, in openness and transparency. And I really believe that actually through openness and transparency and through debate and through, through scrutiny, what we get to that is that good constructive challenge and with through that we get to the, the very best outcomes for the citizens of Sheffield, which is why we're all here. And again, I want to thank members because, you know, from my point of view, I love it when people scrutinize us because it shows complete engage, it shows that people care. So I love it personally. So just want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you all. And that was a bit more extended item. But again, thank you to John for bringing this and no doubt next year's committee will have further such discussions. Just at this point, given that we are just a few minutes from the deadline, twelve thirty gong, whatever, I suggest that we, I see, see through the committee that we extend up to an additional thirty minutes for the last three items. We may not need all of that. Is Martin, any comment on that?
I'm not disagreeing with that, but I will have to leave at twelve thirty.
That, that, that's absolutely fine. I completely understand if people need to leave, but are people in theory able to agree to that just so we can make sure we get the items through. Thank you, thank you. And so moving on to item sixteen, we've got, I think we've got Michael and Sam for the sorry, just my eyes went a moment, progress for the Changing Futures Delivery Plan. Thank you.
Thanks George. Hello everybody. I'm Sam Martin. I'm head of commissioning in the integrated commissioning public health team and
And I'm Michael Corbester. I'm the program manager for Changing Futures.
So we're here to give you, present the update on the Changing Futures Programme, which committee saw an update on this, I think, back in November. So the paper, I think reasonably comprehensively covers where we are with the programme. I guess just by way of introduction to the, to the item, I guess as the, so head of commission, that's the sort of senior responsible officer for the programme. I guess at this point, really important for me to say how proud I am, I guess. And I think of, of the positive way the programme's developed in the city, I think we're proud of the fact that we got the the successful bid in the first place, who one of, I think, twelve areas in the country that have, have got a programme. And we got the funding. But I think now we're starting to come into the final year of the programme for Sheffield. We're starting to see some of those real impacts, both in terms of the system change work that we, we've been doing with the programme, but also really importantly for the people of Sheffield that the programme's here to directly support. There's a little bit of detail in the report itself about, you know, what that means for people and Michael's here and has kind of lead for the programme. He manages the, the sort of face-to-face work with the service users. Can give you more detail if you need some about what some of those impacts are looking like. But, you know, what we've, what we've seen is that some of our most vulnerable residents in the city who are subject to problems around rough sleeping, alcohol and drug addiction, mental health problems, violence and abuse and criminal activity are seeing that some of their lives are really turned around by the intensive casework that the programme's delivering and the changes to some of the services around them. By way of an example of some of those things, so that cohort of people, there's about eighty-one, I think, might be a bit more that we're working with right now. Then, then you can see in the paper, some of the, the number of safeguarding referrals, if you like, over the course of six months to a year made about those individuals dropped almost to zero from high numbers that they were previous to being engaged with the programme. There's a significant reduction in the referrals through our domestic abuse M A R A C, multi-agency assessment process for those the people who have been supported by the programme. And there's an impact on the wider partnerships and the wider city as well. So feedback from our city centre teams suggested that there's been a really significant reduction in reports of aggressive begging in the city centre, which, you know, everyone always thinks, we'll take that with a pinch of salt, but that seems to be a genuine reduction in the last sort of six months to a year from previous years. And we know that the cohort of people that were engaged with, with this programme are some of the people that were most engaged in that sort of activity in the city centre. So it's, we don't want to quite make the leap and say the programme itself has changed all of that, but you can see that there's a direct link between providing intensive support to people with really complex needs and the impact on both their lives themselves, but also the wider city because they have, their lives have an impact on the communities that they're in and in the city centre. So I think we're seeing some really tangible results of the work that we've been putting in with, with the programme. And I guess at this point, we're starting to think about the government money runs out next year. So Michael and team and the board, which Alexis is the chair of, will be over the next few months looking really carefully at what we can do as a city to sustain the work that we've been doing with the additional funding. Because I think we're starting to see that the, the impact makes a difference, both for people's lives, but probably also on a kind of value for money basis for the city. If you want to look at it in those terms and we probably need to, but we need to turn some of that evidence into, I guess, a business case. And I'm hoping, I guess, that over the next course of next year, we come back to committee with a proposal to sustain the work that we've been doing so far. Because I think we've, we're proving that it works and that it's successful. I don't know if there's anything, Michael, that you'd want to add to that just by way of preamble? I've done all the talking already. You just want to take some questions?
Thanks. That's really useful. And thanks for that. I think, I think it's very informative for the committee about, about, about how things are going. And it's also welcome particularly that, you know, you're going to bring back, you know, proposals, I guess, around how this kind of work can continue for the, for the longest term. Got any questions or comments on this? Martin?
Just a quick comment to say thank you. I think we've seen throughout a number of initiatives that sustained work with people who are experiencing homelessness, rough sleeping, addiction. Is, is the way forward? Work where there's a relationship of trust and where the service users have say in kind of how, yeah, have a say in kind of the support that's available rather than being made to jump through hoops that are put in front of them that doesn't always work for them. It's really important. And just as a councillor of City Ward, where I know a lot of our residents are particularly interested in support for these people because it's particularly visible in City Ward, not necessarily more prevalent because homelessness isn't always visible. But I just wanted to say thank you from that perspective.
Thanks. I really appreciate that. And I guess I'd want to pass that on to the team. I guess most of the work is Michael and the team that are out there doing it every day. So thanks, really appreciate that.
Thanks. Well, unless there's anything else, I think there's remains to thank you both and to note that. Thank you. So, okay. Thank you very much. Moving swiftly on to item seventeen, we've got the progress with the safeguarding improvement plan. Andrew, you have the item eighteen, I guess. Yes, I think that's funny. You'll be here shortly. I think we've got Janet against, against item seventeen. And we'll get item eighteen on the show shortly. Thank you.
Hello, Jessica, Chief Social Work Officer. Yes, I'm here to update on the safeguarding delivery plan, which I think came to committee in September last year. I'll, if you have, I was reading a paper copy, doesn't look so good in black and white. It's much better in colour because we've got quite a bit of green on there. But I, I think it's a, it's a positive story. If I pick a few highlights, we've, we're in the last, since we were last at committee, we've had an agreement to split the, the safeguarding board manager post from children's. We had a joint post that was between children's and adults. Which, and we had a very good person in that post, but it was a phenomenal workload for that person and any of us could see why, that if you've got a post which involves adults and childrens, children get, you know, take priority. That's just the way it is. So we've now got an agreement that those posts are separated. We've still got a vacancy. We're, we're within inches now of, of having that post filled. We've got a plan that hopefully will fill that in, in the next couple of weeks. The other thing I'd want to tell you about is we've had someone called Judy Thorley, who's been in doing a review around safeguarding. Judy's a very well thought of consultant and she's done some very thorough work and where we know that when Judy reports, there will be work for us to do. There will be an action plan we have to put together. But we think that will be helpful because it will give us a focus and a direction of where we, we go next. The thing I'm probably most excited about and pleased about, and actually if you look at the, the, the plan, if you look at the RAG rating, there are a couple of things that we're not doing quite so well on. One is about triage of, of safeguarding coming in and one is about outcomes. Now, I think the, the M A S H, the multi-agency safeguarding hub will potentially have a really positive impact on that, you know, particularly around the triage. But then if you get the triage right, the, the outcomes will follow. So basically we're, we're working in a, in a much more multi-agency way. And if I give you an example which demonstrates very simply how it will work, although we haven't started the M A S H officially yet, that, that is first of April, we're looking at that. We've been doing what we call huddles. So on some days we have a group of professionals, usually someone from, from Sheffield City Council, from first contact, someone from mental health and someone from the police and they will discuss the referrals that have come in. So on one particular occasion, they'd had, they'd had seven referrals. So on one particular occasion, they'd had, they'd had seven referrals. Out of the seven, six were deemed not to be safeguarding, because an awful lot of the stuff we get in via the safeguarding route isn't safeguarding. So what, what they will do with that is immediately either it, it gets set aside or it gets sent to wherever it needs to be dealt with. Some, some of those things are actually requests for assessments. Um, and we'll, that, that will go to be assessed, but they don't need to go through a safeguarding, um, process. So on that day, uh, of the seven, it was discovered very quickly that six didn't need to be, go through a safeguarding process. And the one that did, there was, because of the people sitting having that discussion, there was sufficient information for that to be moved on very quickly. Now ordinarily, what would happen is, is there might be a succession of emails, telephone calls over a period of days and days. And when you get hold of the right person with the right information, particularly with the police, that's problematic, um, because of their, their shift patterns, et cetera. But what we feel is this new model will just move, uh, you know, we're getting better information at the beginning and been able to make the, the right decision. So we've got, um, a lot of hope for the, the MASH and how that will, um, take things forward. Um, just think I had something. No, they were the main things I wanted to talk about. And with the MASH as well, we've just, um, uh, had a discussion about having a safeguarding coordinator with that, who will take some overall control, um, and, and will be much clearer in terms of where things are and where they're going and we can track things much better. So I think all in all, it's a, it's a very positive story, but I'm very happy to take questions.
Thanks Janet for that update, that's really helpful. Any questions for Janet? Not saying, no, it's a really important area and I think, and, and this is probably one of the, one of the, you know, one of the earlier time where we've had an update from a, right on the, um, that the committee's previously passed. So I think that's, you know, it's just important to, to, to bring, bring through these updates, particularly because there's a lot of development, as you outlined, with, um, the MASH and other aspects in the last month. So, um, I'm sure we will, uh, next year, I think when you have a, a further update, it will be very useful. Thank you, um, for your contributions today. And then I think we can, uh, come to Andrew for item 18, um, uh, which is the, um, um, the update for the, um, learning district plan and service delivery plan. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Afternoon everybody. Uh, my name's Andrew Weewall, I'm Assistant Director, uh, Adult Future Options. Uh, the paper brought today is, um, a strategic delivery priority paper, which I'm asking you to endorse please, if, uh, we go to. The paper's based around, hopefully you've, you've had time to read this and I'm sure there's questions already, that the parts of this that are important to me, I think, it sort of works on what's been said so far about our priorities across the city, where we're trying to be in with engagement, consultation, uh, particularly around my area of early intervention and prevention with people coming through through transitions, et cetera. The, the, um, the plan of action or the milestones are based on the Aldus report. And this was a report that was asked for and commissioned by ADAS, the Association of Directors of Adult Social Services. Uh, this recommended six areas of concern for each local authority to ensure that you've got a decent progression point in, in all of these areas. And these are inclusion, equal access, person centred planning, safeguarding, sustainable model of care and progression. And I think we've tried to deliver this in, um, in our plan, which is halfway through here. I've pulled together some milestones and, uh, I, I think the milestones are really, really important. Adult Future Options contains more than just people with, with a learning disability. It also contains continuing healthcare and people with a physical disability under 65, uh, learning disabilities over 65. We're working with childrens coming through transitions, so there's elements of engagement from an earlier age and there, there's, it's a very broad spectrum of services. The actions I'm looking for, the milestones of this year and the key points, I think, for the next year or two, are continuing healthcare, transitions, our strategy, our enablement approach, housing and accommodation, review and, and performance, our leadership, uh, continuous improvement in what we deliver and how we deliver it, and the culture in which we work in. And every one of those things has something that's been stated earlier. So the culture and environment is about how we keep people, how we keep our staff, how we retain staff, how we have a resilient workforce and how we, we try to improve the quality of our own staff in line with where we're going with the plans of actions. Every element in that timeline is associated with a consultation and an engagement process that's happened and is continually happening at the moment. Uh, I, I was trying to, when, when you, when you were last on, as it were, there's, there's a lot that's been said before, which is, and I know Angela and Steve, we worked closely with, you know, a great deal of where we're trying to be. And I was trying to give an example of where I think there's been particular pieces of work that have made a difference that we don't ordinarily see. And the one that, that I've picked out, if you don't mind, just, just for one minute. Um, we have children with a learning disability, generally physical and, but, you know, learning disabilities and, and physical disabilities who are fostered in foster placements in, in Sheffield. Ordinarily in the past, those children will have got to 17 and 18 and will have left those foster placements and gone into either residential care or supported living, or in some cases in a flat by themselves with very limited support. We over the last four or five years have made a difference here. We, we have a service called Shared Lives, which I know some of you know about, and we have encouraged those foster carers to become adult shared lives carers, which means that child that, that becomes an adult doesn't have to move, they stay where they are, the person centred approach is essential, they keep the family value together, they keep what they know in the community that they've been brought up in. And the other side of this, financial scrutiny, it, it saves the council an absolute fortune. So we do this thing and it's the right thing to do, based on our right values, our right cultures that we work with, progression, developing the community and saving the council money at the same time. Up until, up until, oh, from the last four years, we've, we've completed about 12 of these, 12 to 14. But this year alone, we've already stopped 14 children having to go into residential or nursing or supportive living schemes. The progression has been absolutely fundamentally important with every culture change that we want to make. I just wanted to bring that example out to say that we, we, we're doing many things around enablement, around rescaling people, about working with our partners, about housing, education, our performance levels around reviews, a decent review, an early review is preventative, both from a financial perspective and certainly from the person's health and physical place. We're working with commissioning colleagues on a new framework where outcomes are more aligned with what we think we should be delivering and not what a provision wants to give us. So that's a, a quite substantial change for us, I think. Uh, going back to one of the points that was made earlier, it's, it's in my very last point on, um, the culture changes that we've got. Um, by April 24, we have started a delivery of training and improvement and experience for all of our workers, uh, trying to engage them in a career rather than just a job. So we've started this teams approach around training and we've included our stick colleagues, so care workers who are on our lower grades, giving them a chance to develop their own skills and abilities and keeping that knowledge base in the city and not losing it and offering them people, those staff, a chance to enhance their own quality of life, uh, their own pay and their own career structures. And that's, that's been a remarkable success so far. So that's just one of the elements of how the culture is changing from within, but also recognizing that the workforce is, is a challenge to everybody at the moment. Uh, the, I appreciate we're late in the day, uh, glad you've read the report. I hope you agree, but if you want to ask me any question, please by all means do so.
Thank you very much, Andrew. I think, I think that's, um, there's some really interesting stuff in there and some really encouraging things around, around the direction. Are there any, and any questions for Andrew? I've just got one, and is it just in terms of, the report outlines that in terms of our comparators in Yorkshire and Humber, there's a lower number of people, um, supported in, um, care homes.
Yep.
Um, and you, just in particular your focus around shared lives, would you credit, um, the, the use of the shared, our use of the shared lives scheme as part of the reasoning that why we have a lower than, um, comparator number of supporters in care homes?
If, if I gave you the straight answer of yes, I'd, I'd seem to be fantastic in my job, but it isn't that straightforward, but yes, in theory, that's, that's exactly it. But also, we have got a greater, uh, scheme in Sheffield around supported living than most other local authorities have. So that's helped us continually. We've also moved people out of residential care, um, in the last few years through, through our, uh, future options teams. That, that improves the quality of life, increases the community aspect as well. So we've, we've seen people who've lived in a residential home for 10, 15 and 20 years. When we've reviewed them, they don't necessarily need to be there. The quality of life can be improved by helping them into their own place, their own tenancy or support with others, where they engage in the community in a better way. So that relationship is also impacted by, uh, the, the Care Trust Community Learning Disability Team having to be resourced appropriately to support ourselves to deliver that model. And that is using a community in a much more strength-based way, rather than people being locked in a residential setting. So it, it is definitely, it's definitely through hard work, yes.
Thank you, that's helpful. I just, I think, I know we're in the, uh, the sort of Latin agenda, but I think to help just return to the recommendations here, seeing as there is, you know, an ask for, for an approval in terms of the, um, position statement for the Aldus, uh, report. So if, and, and that is on page 152. So if the committee is okay with that, no, uh, Ruth?
Sorry, I just, I probably ought to just chip in just to say that I think, um, the scrutiny subcommittee has an item that, um, that relates to this, uh, next week at our final meeting of the year as well, the future model for provision of, uh, learning disabilities and autism, which relates to the first hill, um.
Absolutely.
Closure and, and how that service is gonna go forward. So just to flag that up, that is coming to scrutiny next week. So if there are any questions around that, just watch for that item at scrutiny next week and, um, and questions can be taken there as well.
Uh, yeah, thank you, thank you for that. That's, yeah, absolutely correct. We were part of that ongoing work, which, um, I think there's a long way to go, to be absolutely honest. And hopefully we'll be challenging the trust and the C, and the ICB to encourage more community resources to be placed in the city where they belong and not stuck in hospitals where they don't belong. Um, and, and FERZIL, the example of FERZIL is absolutely right. We've, we failed to get it correct, um, and this, uh, the, the CQC acknowledged that. The recommendations couldn't be continued in the way that they would be delivered. And the outcome of that is we will change and resource differently. And we need to see evidence of that resourcing. Uh, I've spoken to Alexis about this. It's a concern that if we don't get it correct, all the good work that we do will fall if it doesn't get support from the ICB and, and community services. So thank you.
Thank you. Just to return, so just to return to the recommendations, um, are, are we all okay with the recommendations? Uh, no dissent, I'm saying, okay, it's all agreed. Thank you, thank you Andrew very much for coming today.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the end of the last item, uh, today. Uh, we don't have, um, as explained earlier, we don't have any, uh, fixed meetings in that they will be confirmed at the annual meeting of the council for ne, next year. Um, uh, this is my last, um, meeting and the chair of this committee for now and, uh, this is my last meeting, I've very much enjoyed, um, being the co-chairs here and working with everyone. Thank you all.